Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us here at City Hall and in council chambers. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and our invocation this morning will be given by Deacon Richard Longoria from St. Helena of the True Cross of Jesus Church.
We bow before you, Almighty God, and humbly ask you to bestow your holy graces upon our city council as they discuss, ponder, and deliberate on the issues of our day that will affect all who live in our fair city named after your son. May their decisions be fair for all. May their actions reflect your compassion and kindness for all those who are impacted by their votes. May they put aside friction and jealousy and show concern for the needs of all our people. May their daily decisions and work uphold the common good. Give them the strength, insights, and courage to make difficult judgments that are genuine and honest and free from bias and decent, that will move our community forward for the benefit of all who live in our city. We ask this in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Deacon. Thank you for being here. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag will be led by Emma Wilson. She's a senior at Richard King High School, National Honor Society, ranked top 10 of her class, and on as student council officer. Welcome, Emma.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Emma. Ms. Huerta, would you please call the room?
Mayor Paulette Juahardo?
Present.
Council members Roland Barrera?
Here.
Sylvia Campos?
Here.
Gil Hernandez?
Here.
Michael Hunter will be absent today. Jim Klein?
Here.
Mike Pestley? Everett Roy?
Present.
Dan Suckley?
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni?
Present.
City attorney Miles Risley?
Here.
Mayor and council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. That'll take us to Section E, our city manager's comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Great. Good morning, mayor and members of the council. We do have two items on our city manager's report. The first one is an update on a cancer awareness relief effort. And then, secondly, Rebecca and Logan will provide the city council and the community an update on meeting chamber logistic changes because of a remodel that'll happen here, an upgrade to this chamber. So let's begin with Corpus Christi Firefighters' Cancer Awareness Relief Effort. There'll be a T-shirt sale at City Hall as part of this effort on September 18th. And today, Carlos Torres, the former fire union president and former firefighter, oh, here he is, okay, I was looking for you, will present. Recently, Johnny Staub's, Michael Rodriguez, deputy city manager, the fire chief, and myself met with Johnny Staub's, the fire union president, for dinner, just to continue our strong, positive working relationship. And in that dinner, Johnny asked that Carlos present to the full city council on this effort that really has grown over the years and become very successful in terms of acknowledging our firefighters, but also providing dollars to persons impacted by cancer. And so I'll just give you a little background, and then Carlos will come up to the microphone and finish off for me. So on Friday, September 1, the Corpus Christi Firefighters Care Organization Cancer Awareness Relief Effort, known as CARE, launches its 14th annual T-shirt sale to raise money for local nonprofits, firefighters, and their families battling cancer. The CARE, excuse me, the CARE organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and it provides relief effort, and it symbolizes efforts to those battling the cancer disease. On Monday, September 18, the CARE organization, for the first time, will be at City Hall selling these T-shirts in the City Hall parking lot facing Staples and Leopard. This is part of the fundraising effort. Over the past 14 years, CARE has donated almost $900,000 to firefighters that have been struck with cancer. All CARE merchandise is available for purchase at the Corpus Christi Firefighters Association Hall on AR Street, though it's Monday through Friday at 8:00 to 5:00. But because it's so popular, they want to do it right here at the grounds of City Hall, and so we've allowed them to do that. So Carlos, come on up. Carlos, you know Carlos from our community engagement meetings, and also as a firefighter, but he was a firefighter for over 30 years and was a past fire union president. He's also very instrumental in the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and is the chair, Carlos, that way title is, of it. You oversee the nonprofit as well.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Great. So let me turn it over to Carlos then.
Good morning, City Manager Peter Zanoni, city council members, and Mayor Paulette Juahardo. And as the city manager put it, we have a great relationship, not just the association, not just the fire department, with you all and the city manager, but now we're extending that relationship, and we've done it for a while now, for 15 years, with the Corpus Christi Firefighters' CARE. You might ask what does CARE stand for? It's Cancer Awareness Relief Efforts. And as the city manager mentioned, we're located in the Corpus Christi Professional Firefighters Association, located at 6014 Ayers. Now, we have a brand-new phone number, so jot it down. It's 361-444-7848, not the fours, 444-7848. As the city manager mentioned, CARE was organized in 2009 by a group of firefighters that found the need to bring awareness, not just to breast cancer, but to all types of cancer in Corpus Christi and Neises County. It's a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization, bring awareness to all types of cancer and fight in the fight against cancer. And how do we do this? Well, we have a committee meetings almost every month, and we get, as we get organized and ready for our CARE campaign, which runs August, September, and October. And our president, Johnny Staub's, had a great idea. He said, you know what? We've brought the pink truck before to City Hall for pictures, but we've never, that I can remember in the 15 years, had a combination, pink truck and sales, not just for city employees, but for the general public and the county employees. So let's sell T-shirts, caps, and youth T-shirts, and toddler shirts, and donate the proceeds, as we do every year, back into our local community. We also help our local firefighters, as Mr. Zanoni mentioned, and retired firefighters when they get diagnosed with cancer. As you know, not all your expenses are covered by medical insurance. You have to travel up to Anderson, San Antonio, Fort Worth, Dallas, wherever you're getting your treatment. It involves fuel, hotel stays, a lot of expenses. So every year, we get several applications from firefighters in the community, and we help them out with financial contributions. So let's talk about the big event, as the city manager mentioned, Monday, September 18, starting at 10 o'clock till whenever. We'll be here all day with the pink fire truck on the Leopard side. And CARE committee members and board of directors of CARE would like to thank not just the city manager, Mike Rodriguez, for having us and allowing us to have the big pink fire truck. We were at the art walk Friday. Sales were great. A lot of people, we mentioned to them that were coming to City Hall, they're going to come out and visit. So let me show you the shirts. This year, we brought back our, this one is the toddler shirt. So we brought back our toddler shirt this year, and it's very popular. We're selling a lot of them. We brought back our youth shirt, has the same design, but in sizes small and medium. And then, I'll unveil, even though some of you may have seen it already, this is the new shirt, the 2023 shirt designed for CARE. And this is the front of it. And there's a history behind it, if I may have a couple of minutes more. These are ballcaps. We brought the camouflage cap, you can't see it, but it's camo, okay? And this, we brought this cap back too, because this is a very popular one. When we started in 2009, we started with a small number of shirts, 3,000. They sold out. Second year, 3,000, 2010. 2011, we went to over 12,000 shirts, and they all sold out. I can honestly tell you, the Corpus Christi Firefighters' CARE is the largest organization in Texas compared to none other. You can compare us to Dallas, San Antonio, Houston, any big city, or any small city, group of firefighters that sells their shirts. In fact, we get asked every time we go to the state convention and the international convention, how do you do it? Well, how we do it is because the people of Corpus Christi are very generous, very generous. In fact, Corpus Christi Texas received the award, Mr. Zanoni, at the state convention in El Paso, for the fill-the-boot for 2022 as a number-one organization in a number-one fire department in Texas. We beat everyone out. So for more information, log on to our social media pages, Facebook, we're under Corpus Christi Firefighters' CARE, our Instagram page. You can also email us at care936@yahoo.com, or just call us on that new phone number. Thank you for your time, council members, mayor, thank you for your time. We're ready to go. September 18, 10 o'clock till whenever, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, great job, Carlos. Mayor, any questions or comments on the CARE?
No, no, thank you very much, and thank you for being here, Carlos.
Great. Okay, our second item is Rebecca, our city secretary, is going to explain to city council and the community who attends our council meetings, a change in venue that 'll last several months as we upgrade this city council chambers. The electrical, AV, and computer systems, television systems, all need substantial upgrades. So that'll take place, and Rebecca will walk through the relocation plan with us now.
Thank you, Peter. This is Mayor and council, city secretary Rebecca Huerta, and I'm going to be talking to today, as the city manager discussed, on the council chambers renovation and remodel project. That's scheduled to begin on Monday, September 18. Today, Director of Communications Logan Cobb's and I will provide the council and the community with information about how meetings will operate once they move across the street, and how we are informing the public about the move as well. So first of all, thank you so much to the RTA for hosting us while our chambers are under construction. We're grateful to them for their assistance and for their support. They've been very, very kind, very accommodating. While we're using their facilities, we want to show our gratitude by being respectful of their spaces, procedures, and rules. So beginning September 19, city council ceremonial, regular, and tours meetings, those are the reinvestment zone meetings that we have, all of those will be held at the CCRTA boardroom. That's what their chambers is called, the CCRTA boardroom. So at the CCRTA, all doors and elevators, except the main entry doors, are access-controlled with a card. So parking is not available at the CCRTA, it's very limited. So public attendees will need to park at City Hall and then use a crosswalk to safely cross the street. And I'll have a map on the next side to show how we think that will occur, how we'd like that to occur. So entry will be through the main doors that face the bus stop, and once through CCRTA security, city security officers will guide attendees to the elevator or stairs and up to the second floor. So their boardroom is on the second floor. And please note that public restrooms are on the first floor, next to security. So here's a map of where that is. So there's public parking on Staples Street. The first parking lot is the one closest to City Hall that's out here. There's limited parking there. A lot of employees park there, but it is a public lot, so the public can use that space. The main area, though, is this area here. I'm making that very small, but it's that is this lot as well. So the way people would get to the CCRTA, there's these, the crosswalk here. If they park in this lot, there's a crosswalk there as well. So they would proceed through the crosswalks, and then the main entrance is here. So it's like a circular entrance there through CCRTA. That's the main door. If people try to go into the doors that are on Staples and Leopard, those doors are restricted. You're just, those individuals will have to go through the entrance there. So that's the main map. So let's talk about public comment procedures. So for signup for public comment, it will remain mostly the same. We'll have a public comment online, like we normally do. It opens the Monday before the council meeting and closes before the council meeting begins. We'll also have the City Hall kiosk that is here, will stay there, in case somebody's paying a utility bill on Monday and wants to use that facility. On the day of the meeting, we will have signup available outside the boardroom. There's going to be some iPads on stands, and the public will, just like they do now, they'll be able to sign in right before the meeting outside of the boardroom. Once inside the boardroom, attendees may sit in either theater-style seating or regular chairs. There are several large-screen TVs and speakers mounted around the room for easier viewing and for listening. So now I'll go ahead and introduce Director of Communications Logan Cobb's, and she'll review the communications plan.
Thank you, Rebecca. Mayor, council, good morning. Logan Cobb's, Director of Communications. So we worked collaboratively with Rebecca and her team on a comprehensive communication plan for the transition from chambers to the RTA. So I want to walk you through that plan today. As you see, virtual options, live stream will remain the same. So the community will be able to still watch the meeting on our YouTube channel, as well as our CCTV channel, as they are able to do today. Virtual comment will also remain the same. So as you see, we do have six cameras situated all throughout council chambers, and that allows us to have different angles and pans on different speakers. At the RTA building, they only have one camera, so we will not have all of those angles. But they did just upgrade their system, so the sound and the presentation itself will remain the same for the public when they're viewing. So as the slides state, we will have directional and informational signage, as well as marketing to the community, just to make sure that we're answering all of their questions before we make that official move on September 19. So I wanted to talk you through what that communication plan is today. It is going to be a phased approach, so you will not see all of our marketing materials released on one day. But as for today, our social media outreach does begin. We will send out our news release today, as well as the save-the-date signage and information that you'll see around City Hall. So we'll have a banner in the rotunda, as well as some signage outside of council at the conclusion of the meeting today. So you will be seeing that as well. Beginning next week, we will have signage on the doors here at City Hall, as well as at the RTA. And security at City Hall will have cards. So they'll have cards to be able to hand out to the community over the next couple of weeks until we make that move. So it'll have all the questions, all the informations that they'll need, will be distributed to the community between now and the 19th. There also will be a video that our multimedia team will produce, and it'll basically be what Rebecca just went over today. How are we walking across the street to the RTA? What can the community be on the lookout for? And any questions that they may have should be answered in that video. So we tried to be extremely comprehensive. We think we got just about everything. When we make the actual transition, the day of, on that 19th date, there will be directional signage, there'll be A-frames, there'll be staff, you know, helping across the street to answer any questions that we may have. So that's all that I have today. Rebecca and I stand by to answer any of your questions regarding the transition.
Councilman Klein.
Yeah, I just want a clarification. You said that the kiosk to sign up for public comment is still going to be here in City Hall, yet will it be just outside council chambers? Will that interfere at all? Will it be interfered with by the construction in the chambers here?
At this point, we have been told that it would still be usable.
Okay.
So it'll still be usable. If there's any change, though, based on what happens with the construction, we would let the public know.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks.
Councilman Hernandez.
Everything, you said everything had to have some sort of security pass, even the elevator. So are we going to be given some sort of pass, or is it going to be our ID cards that are going to allow us to go in?
Yes, the council members will receive that, and so will staff.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Just for clarification, so if the kiosk stays here, can somebody then, on Tuesday, you know, like if they park here, sign up here, or do they have to use the iPads that you were talking about?
They can use either one.
So, okay, that will be option, okay, it will be up and running.
Yeah, because during the transition, someone may come here, you know, by mistake.
Then, or over there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I think that's all the questions, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. And Logan.
Okay, mayor, that concludes the city manager's report for this morning.
You sure? Ten more minutes if you want to talk about something. Chief Mark, are you?
Chief, you have an update?
You're good. Okay. Let me see, hold on just a sec. Okay. Before we get going, we're going to go ahead and start with public comment, and we'll circle back if someone on the list is not available. But I'd like to give Councilman Hernandez and Councilwoman Campos a little point of privilege moment to share with us some celebrations they have. Councilman?
Yes. Yesterday was my wife's birthday, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. And fortunate enough for me, tomorrow is our 26th wedding anniversary. So.
Twenty-six years?
Thank you.
How old were you?
She's going to heaven.
So in case I ever forgot the birthday, I would never forget the anniversary.
I hope she's watching.
I hope she is.
I hope she is.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Ms. Campos.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you so much. Well, today is a special day. It is my youngest brother's birthday. He did pass away this year, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, his life was, you know, acknowledged, and that he did the best he could. I also have it, it also happens to be my son's birthday, so we can't forget those birthdays, which is Joshua. Joshua turned 39 today, and it just so happened that we had the time. So I'm grateful. Thank you so much for the mayor acknowledging that, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Campos. Okay, with, yes, yes. Happy birthdays, anniversaries, all of those good things. Let's see. Mr. Risley, could you please recite the decorum, please?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Risley. And again, we're going to start, but whoever, if someone, if I call someone's name, they're not here, they will absolutely get the opportunity as soon as they get here, since we're going to start a few minutes early. Let's see. Individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address before beginning your comments. There are two opportunities in which you can make comment. The first is now, a public comment, and the second is when we actually hear the item. Please choose one. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, while non-resident comments are limited to one. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. If, that will let you know exactly how much time you have left. Once your timer is up, the buzzer will go off, at which time we would appreciate the conclusion of your comment. If you have a petition or any other information pertaining to your subject matter, please hand it over to our city secretary, Ms. Huerta, and she will distribute it to us before you speak. So with that, if Steve Klepper is here, we'll start with Steve. Okay, he's not, so we will circle back to Steve, or Mr. Klepper. Alberto Carrillo?
Good morning. Before beginning my comment, I just wanted to share our thoughts and prayers. Which brother was it, if I could ask?
My brother Roy, Roy Campos.
Roy. And I do, how is Alex doing? I've been meaning to ask.
He's doing great, thank you.
Good. Tell him I said hello.
Okay.
We, saying great. And also, just wanted to make a comment regarding a very, very nice chat that I had with Councilman Roy, unexpected, on Friday night at the JV Cal Allen Annihilation, where, I'm kidding, it was interesting. By the time I turned around, looked up at the clock, I said, but thank you so much for your time. I did, I was very, it was very nice, and I learned quite a bit in that very short period of time. Alberto Carrillo III, 4055 Calarmet. Alberto Carrillo III, 4055 Calarmet. Why I'm here, as I was kind of mulling over, okay, I guess you guys can probably figure what I'm here for. Has to do with our budget. But before even getting to that, as I was doing this review, somewhat involved last week, the thoughts that came to mind were, and I was reminded by some residents in the neighborhood where my mom lives, the struggles that they're having as far as trying to make ends meet. And then I also remembered an elderly woman, retiree, lives on Mohawk, I think it was. And that really, I remembered, I shared that with my mom. And then I thought about all the young families that I see at HEB and trying to make ends meet with groceries and what have you. So that kind of brought that all full circle. And again, I'm here today to not oppose the budget, but to suggest that we continue to look at and take the steps. I shared my point, my $11.5 million reduction. That was just my suggestion, and I hope that you guys followed suit. I was, however, pleased to find out that the tax rates, or the water rates for residents will not go up. I hope that stays in place. I hope you guys go with that. I know there are many here that are very, very concerned on that. And then this morning, as I was going over the budget, one of the things that I found was budget item I-5, where Flint Hill Resources is looking for a refund payment of $290,000 plus. And then I'm reminded, are there going to be other refineries that are going to come after, or not come after, but seek the same remedy? And so that even drove the point even stronger, that we need to, just as we do at our homes, guys, we need to tighten our belts. And we really, really, really need to be prepared for the future, because we don't know what comes around us. But we need to be ready, and we do not want to be caught in the same situation that our friends and colleagues down the street, in Oasis County, found themselves in. And so with that, it's very imperative, and I say it over and over again, save for a rainy day. Be fiscally responsible. I tell that to my kids, I tell that to young kids, and I need to say that here. We need to claw it back. And again, I hope you guys will follow suit and do what's right for this community. Thank you all. And as always, God bless you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. Maggie Peacock.
All righty. Maggie Peacock, 1773 Ennis Justin Road. So today, you all, elected officials in office to serve the people, will finalize a budget. I'm hoping with everything I have in me, after all the meetings with young professionals from the Gulf Mexico Youth Climate Summit, with, we had with some of y'all's team, after many emotional public comments, and really just some time to truly ground yourselves and think about what the right thing to do is, I am really hoping y'all will finalize a budget that's made for the people. Please vote on a budget that will prioritize the needs and preferences of community members and the general public. The general public is not far-right conspiracy theorists or heavy industrial representatives. The general public is working-class people who maybe can't make it to public comment at noon on a Tuesday. When I was writing my public, my public comment today, right before I got here, I just kind of stopped at this part, because I really just didn't know how to continue. I was going to write about how the climate crisis, about the climate crisis, and how there's no more time to waste, and we must invest in a clean, livable future. But I'm tired of being so repetitive and having to advocate on a safe future when that should just be a given. We are urging you to invest in sustainability and resiliency, please. Resiliency during a climate crisis refers to the ability of communities to adapt, withstand, and recover from the adverse impacts of climate change and related extreme weather events. It involves strategies and measures designed to minimize vulnerabilities, enhance the capacity to bounce back from the various challenges posed by the climate crisis. In our city, it looks like heating and cooling centers, community gardens, and tree planting, and sustainable tourism, et cetera. Everything we have the opportunity to include in this budget. Climate change is bringing about a range of environmental, social, and economic challenges, including rising temperatures, more frequent and severe storms, droughts, sea level rise, and disruptions to ecosystems. Does this all sound familiar? It should, considering we're all experiencing this in the coastal bend. Building resilience is critical to addressing these challenges effectively. So please, as you're voting for this budget, please just do what's right. Just do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Klepper in the audience yet? He's not. Okay. Bridget Baldwin. Bridget Baldwin, okay. And if we can have Sean Flanagan, Susie Saldana, Marilena Garza come forward. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. I am Bridget Baldwin. I'm a resident of Corpus Christi. Been there all my life. 1518 Howard Street is my address. And I came here with a concern. I didn't know what else to do or where else to go. I've already put in some notices. My notice is that my home was built from Hurricane Harvey, from the GLO, excuse me, GLO, built my house. They demolished the original one and rebuilt it. And we had already put $100,000 into that, but the GLO came by and said that our house was still out of ordinance and offered to do that at no charge. We, they took care of the permits, they took care of the contractors and all of that. After my home was built, well, during the demolition, my husband passed away. And he passed away December 13th, 2019. I moved into the house February 2020. We had some issues, and I noticed that my driveway was out of compliance. And so the driveway out of compliance, I contacted the development department and asked them, what could I do? Because my driveway was dangerous. They looked into it and said that I didn't have a permit for the original driveway. And I said, well, I don't know anything about that. The building permits and all that was done by the construction company and all that should have been taken care of. And they said, well, no, it wasn't. And so I had an offer to rebuild on the other side on my own, so to bring it into compliance. The city denied my permit to build another driveway, because I'm only allowed one, I think, E's or something, when it, on that particular street. They told me I needed to come down and fill out a permit for the driveway I had. I told them I wasn't coming down there to fill out a permit for the driveway I had, because I didn't know anything about that, that should have been taken care of with the builder. And the code enforcement gave them a notice to move in and said everything was okay. Long story short, I was issued a citation because I didn't have a permit. And I told them I didn't feel responsible to pay a $6,000 citation, because that was already taken care of through the bill, through the permit department and the builder. Said it wasn't. So they prosecuted me. And this is all in writing. They prosecuted me. And I filed a complaint with the Justice Department and all of that. So anyway, there's too many items to give you in copies. I'm going to make copies available to everybody, but I just wanted the city to know what's going on. And I will continue to, excuse me, bring you notices.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Sean Flanagan?
Mayor, can we have Steve Viera get with her?
Yeah. Was he going?
I'll have Steve Viera get with her. Please. And then report back to us, I mean, at least in an email or something.
Excuse me?
And have him at least provide some follow-up to us.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Yeah, there's one more. Mr. Flanagan?
Hi, my name is Sean Flanagan. I live at 4218 Herndon Street. I may be preaching to the choir, but you get 1,000 pages of stuff every week to read through, I've been told, which is a lot of stuff. So this is something you might have missed. But I think it's important to everybody, and what I've given you is the revised Section 81B of the State of Texas Health and Safety statutes. And it specifically is relating the COVID-19 responses on the parts of any government entity in the state of Texas, be it state, local, school board, whatever. And they're really, they're pretty explicit in there. And the fact that they are prohibiting face-covering mandates, they're prohibiting vaccine mandates, and they're prohibiting closure mandate for private businesses, saying, no, we're moving on, you're not doing this. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a copy of this new State of Texas statute when it effect one September. And I really think it's a good thing, because, you know, hindsight's 20/20. If we look back on, everybody might have had good intentions. But we see that we were misled on where the virus came from. We were misled on the efficacy, the effectiveness of masks against virus. We were misled on that they changed the definition of what a vaccine is. I draw your attention, Jill Biden just got COVID again, and she's been vaccinated and double-vaccinated, whatever. And in other words, what it is, we've been forced, some folks, to get an experimental treatment that was labeled a vaccine. The only reason it was labeled a vaccine is they changed the definition of what a vaccine was. We have no idea what the long-term effects of these vaccines, quote-unquote, are. And we won't know for several years, but it was rushed through. And I'm not pointing fingers, but I'm saying this is a mistake we don't want to do again. And, you know, we were misled on what were the long-term educational, mental, and health effects of lockdowns, particularly at schools. So I think this is really something good, that the state of Texas has taken it off y'all's hands, so you don't have to make any decisions in regards to closures or anything, because they prohibited it by state law. And as that, something is important, I figured you all wanted to know, but I figured most of you are preaching to the choir, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Susie Saldana.
Susie Luna Saldana, 4710 Hackel. First of all, I want to tell you thank you for all the hard work you've done on this budget. You really have come around to see some of the choices of the people. Not all of you, but the majority of you, okay? So I want to make sure that you know that we appreciate the hard work you do. And I know that our comments are hard, but they're truthful. So for all of you, thank you, and a heartfelt thanks to our city manager for putting our forward on the things that have been done. But I want to tell you that those of you who felt very uncomfortable about your industrial partners, look at the amount of money they're taking from us. Don't feel so bad. Think about what's good for not only your families, but what's good for the people. So I want to make sure that all of you realize that it is a hard job you have, but you're greatly appreciated. Those of you that started from the start, all of you, I thank you. I thank you for always putting the people first. And Mayor, I thank you for saying it. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Saldana. Marilena Garza.
Hello. There's going to be a PowerPoint, I believe. Okay. Okay. So my name is Marilena Garza, 1008 Margarit Street, and I'm a District One voter, and I vote all the time, every time. So for a slide, you know, I believe, and a lot of people believe, that Corpus Christi City Council hates homeless people. You say one thing, and then your actions are something completely different. Next slide, please. So let me first set the record straight. With the exception of one person, none of y'all were at the American Bank Center during the big freeze. None of y'all were at the FEMA Dome during the big freeze either, and I would know, because I was there myself. And if you were there, you would have seen that people were covered in feces, urine. Sometimes it wasn't even their own. For days, they were left like that, because there was no access to showers. And the restrooms at the American Bank Center, everyone knows that they're licked, they sometimes work, sometimes don't work. That bank center is not meant to be used in that manner, and therefore, a lot of the functioning toilets stopped working. I showed up, because I had volunteers that I sent over there, because the city asked for volunteers to help staff that shelter. I had people calling me, telling me that people were covered in poop. And I show up with clean clothes, dry blankets, and I'm told to leave by city staffers, that this isn't a donation center, just leave them like that. So people stayed in these conditions that you see up here, versus going to that American Bank Center. I am disgusted with my own self, that I trusted the city and convinced people to go over there, just for them to be left in Robstown, because the power went out at the American Bank Center. Power was going out everywhere. Went to the FEMA Dome, it was complete chaos over there, it was getting worse. And then eventually, they found themselves in Robstown, one-way ticket, and left there. Even with a car that's a far drive to come back. And you left houseless people out there? It's already rough in Robstown, and you just go take one problem, go dump it on the other side of town, huh? Next slide, please. This is what elected officials should have been doing, helping people. Those two people in the middle were covered in urine, not even their own urine. They're walking right into the FEMA Dome right now. See those bags they have in their hands? You're welcome. Next slide, please. This is what our current city plans look like. Not expanding heating and cooling centers. If we would expand and keep that $150,000 that Charles wanted to cut, we wouldn't have things like the American Bank Center fiasco. We would have paid staffers resources. Instead, the community came together. I had Starbucks, I reached out to them. How, why wasn't any of the other city council reaching out to people in the community and asking for help? Do better.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Can we have, let's see, Alex Flukie, Amanda Guerra, Pat Craig, Eli McKay, and John Weber are the next speakers. And if you can make your way up front, that would be appreciated. Alex, did I pronounce it correctly?
It's easy once you hear that. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Alex Flukie, and I live at 729 Sam Street. And the purpose of my visit here today is to drop off over 150 postcards that a small group of TMUCC students, with the help of me, collected for the past week. And the people who sign these postcards represent TMUCC students, staff, alumni, and supporters that want the 2024 budget to prioritize sustainability initiatives that have been proposed. Again, I'm here to urge you to approve the funding for heating and cooling center expansion, the tree canopy survey, air quality monitoring. Please take the time to look through these postcards and to see that people are very passionate about a better future for Corpus. Over the past week, the people we talked to, it was really interesting, because almost all of them didn't know who represented them at the local level. They didn't know that the budget was currently being proposed, and they didn't know what district they lived in, or that the city council was likely not going to approve these sustainability initiatives that we were talking to them about. But on the positive side, after we talked to these 150 people, they now know who their district council member is. They know who represents them at the local, at the local level, and they know that down-ballot elections are extremely, extremely important. And they know how the budget works. And they know that they support these initiatives. It's clear to me that the more informed our Corpus voters are, the more likely they are to vote, and the more likely they'll vote in the elections that you all represent. And when people vote, the council is more representative of what our city looks like. This is a representative bureaucracy, and this is a good thing. This is something we should be proud of, and something that we should strive for as a community. And lastly, I just wanted to plug a town hall that we're hosting, Texas Rising, at Texas A&amp;M University on September 21st. As of now, we have seven departments that RSVP'd yes, and we've heard from five of the city council members, either a yes, thank you. We're so excited to have you, and if you have time. to Corpus. We'd love to have you all there, and please check your email if this is something new to you. We've sent a few invites. So thank you so much and hope to see you on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Amanda Getta.
Hello, Amanda Getta, Wind Hollow, District Five. So first of all, I want to start off by saying shame on me. Shame on me because I never took interest in anything that happened here at City Hall. I didn't care about water rates going up, I just paid it. I just went along with the flow like so many other community members do. It wasn't until my job was dangling on the line, which, if I'm not mistaken, y'all already cut us off on Thursday when y'all voted. But anyway, shame on me. But being, sitting out here brought light to a lot of things that are going on in the city that I had no idea about. But what I want to get back to is the marshals. Wednesday, August 30th, was the last day for one of my coworkers. And some of y'all have kind of mentioned in your meetings that, why am I the only one coming up here? Well, three of the marshals have school-aged children, two of them have a student of first year college. And every time that I come up here, I'm losing $216, because that's what I make a day, and that's before taxes and everything. $216 is nothing to some of you, you know, according to your, whatever you make. But I'm happy with my job. It's an honest job, it's the American dream. I found a job that I loved, that I was good at, and that was my dream, to retire from here. This would have been my second retirement. But my friend retired, and he didn't, he wasn't allowed the option. We asked our boss, our real boss, the police officer, if our, if our, if we could buy our weapon for our coworker, because that's usually what departments do, is they buy the weapon for their officer, the officer that's retiring, because you're allowed to buy your weapon. The weapons that were bought were bought by municipal court. A couple of years ago, we did a transition. We went from 40 Glocks to 9mm Smith &amp; Wesson. The clerk, who is not a police officer, that doesn't know anything about police, said, no, you're going to give those guns to CCPD. Okay, that's fine. So my coworker didn't have the option of buying his duty weapon as a reminder of the 17 years of service that he gave to the city. But he did get this. No one said, the clerk did not go say bye to him or anything, but he got this at 5:38. Mind you, we get off at 5:00. This is a transcription, transcription of the voicemail that he got. Not a handshake, not a goodbye, thank you for your 17 years of service. This is what he got. Hey, Robert, this is Gilbert. Hey, man, I'm so sorry, I just got so busy, and I apologize for not coming in to say goodbye, stopping by and wishing you off, man. Listen, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. Thank you for all you've done here, and please, see if you need at any time, feel free to include me as a reference if you need it. I know you can come on, and it kind of, the transcription is kind of off when, I guess it doesn't understand, but it says, if you need, and then there's a line. But if you need me, I'm there for you if you need me for a reference. Talk to you later, bye. 17 years of service, forced to retire because people are under the impression that the city is, they're going to transfer us somewhere else. No, we're having to apply just like everybody else. But the thing is that we can't use our peace officer license anywhere else where we're applying. But, you know, I asked, I emailed most of y'all for dignity to give us at least six months to trickle out, and then you can freeze the positions just like you did for the airport police. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Getta. Yes.
Peter, would you check on the weapon issue? Because I think that is maybe an unwritten policy, but I know at the county, they did that. Is what? I'm sorry, Mike.
We'll have Chief Markle come up.
Yeah. Maybe I'm wrong.
That's all right, the chief should know.
Yeah, Peter, they denied that for administrative reasons. That's pretty chicken.
That's actually law. They're, by law, they're allowed to purchase their weapon. We'll straighten it out. If they, they didn't reach out to me, but if you, like Michael, or you want to reach out to me, we'll get it squared away.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Pat Craig.
Pat Craig, 78414, District Five. Good afternoon. Since the tree canopy and air monitoring was brought up again after the amendment had been voted down last week, I don't see why the marshals can't be brought up again. In a budget that is increased by $100 million, surely there's room to pay marshals who make only $55,000. To justify this elimination, because two are retiring and three are looking for employment elsewhere, is nonsensical. They were all told they were losing their jobs the day before the report was accepted by the municipal court committee. I wasn't surprised when Councilman Pusley retracted his second last week, as he was a committee member who motioned to accept the bull report, then later claimed he didn't know about the marshal situation. He admitted this could have been handled better over a two-year process. I fully agree. Councilman Pusley also nonchalantly stated that they could go to the county and they would hire them on the spot. Actually, the process would take three to six months and be significant, a significant pay cut. In addition, the city seems to patronize the marshals when referring to the RIF program as an answer to those about to lose their chosen career field. The city manager stated last week that the marshals were created about 10 years ago with the promise of revenue collecting that never materialized. No, how about 25 years ago, and not a revenue generating entity, entity, as had been stated repeatedly during council? Now, who's going to accomplish the following? One, arrest defendants with outstanding class C warrants when they don't answer their texts. Two, transport arrested persons to appear before the judge or the CDC, and sometimes wait with them there. Three, maintain order in the court, ensure the safety of the judges, court personnel, and court customers. Four, serve subpoenas and summonses for the municipal court. Five, serve emergency protective orders. Six, serve juvenile summons and take case managers to home visits. Another recommendation is to carve out funds from the proposed financial reserve increase. Why is this increase being increased to 24% when previously the council approved 20% as sufficient? A higher credit rating is not a good enough reason. The least the council can do is to keep the marshals another year, give them the dignity of not being fired short notice based on inaccurate, on inaccurate data and failure of leadership support. I don't know if this would relieve the hypocrisy of stating, our employees are the most important thing in our business during the budget briefing, but it would be an honorable start. For these reasons, I am asking you to reconsider an amendment regarding the marshals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Rachel, no, I'm sorry, Eli McKay.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eli McKay, and like all of you, I live on the land of the Karanka'ua and Lipan Apache peoples at what is now 1008 Marguerite Street, District One. Today, I'm going to speak very slowly and hope that certain councilmen who didn't listen last week will listen to understand, not to respond. Listen to understand, not to respond. I think that's important in all listening situations. My suggestion for y'all would be to listen to public comments with a more open heart. Instead of listening with your ego or fear, which I truly believe there's no need for fear, and I also believe that ego is the enemy of the people, so put it aside. We want to see your hearts. We know that's why you were elected or ran for office, because you love this city, so... Someone reached out to me after my last comment to explain some of the mistakes of the past, or perhaps justify their continuation. It's funny, because I used to be surprised when people were triggered by the truth, but I'm not surprised by it anymore. People are triggered by the truth quite often these days. I'm learning more and more that some of the poor decisions were made in regard to our city as far back as the 80s, which I was born in. But especially around 2006 to 2008, a lot of poor decisions were made that are still plaguing our city today. So I believe that y'all can be the council that will get us out of that rut, can move our community forward instead of pawning off the problem to future councils. And I think that y'all know that, you know, people are paying attention, and not just the same people that show up for public comment every week. There's a lot more people paying attention than just the usual folks. So the mistakes of the past are no longer an option with the people paying attention. $150,000 to expand heating and cooling centers, a program that our city manager confirmed last week has been successful. I was amazed at how many people use that service, and I was just amazed. So this program has been successful, and it helps our most vulnerable residents, so it is necessary. And, you know, just like our mayor said last week, that y'all fund successful programs, and so let's see it. We want to see you fund that successful program by resuming the $150,000 to the heating and cooling centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. John Weber.
John Weber, 6009 Naples Street, next slide. Last week, I listened to the very powerful comments of Eli McKay. I found it immature and disrespectful that later in the meeting, two council members make snide remarks aimed at those comments. Eli's comments moved me to take a camera on an early morning run last Thursday. Next slide. It was another hot morning. Some of our brothers and sisters weren't sleeping on comfy beds in air-conditioned houses. Next slide. Our fellow residents were attempting to sleep wherever they found themselves. Next slide. Uptown smelled like burning styrofoam. Even with the terrible air, I could still strongly smell a gas leak in the same place I reported one week earlier. Next slide. In 2022, the city leaked approximately 63,301 million cubic feet of gas, just on the city side of the meter. The gas department should be focused on preventing leaks. Next slide. This just doesn't look comfortable to me. Next slide. It was an ozone action day, and the Parks Department continued spewing unfiltered exhaust for residents and tourists to breathe when better options have already been presented to the department. I appreciate the gas department doing a quick briefing. Now it is recorded that 850,000 of gas marketing budget is going to developers as cash rebates. This is a needless transfer of ratepayer and taxpayer money to developers that goes straight to their bottom line. There is zero evidence any of the money is used to reduce the price of these new houses. All fiscal conservatives without conflicts of interest should be in favor of removing this from the budget. We all know that rates of childhood asthma are associated with the presence of gas stoves in residents. We know that rates of childhood asthma, yeah, voting in favor of continuing and increasing the number of rebates is a risk to the city. The city could become a target of a class-action lawsuit brought on by parents who have gas stoves with children with asthma. All my past oral and written comments informing the council of the health impacts in the research could also be used as evidence that you were aware of the research and continued forward, knowing the health impacts on our children. It is kind of like the city giving cash rebates to vendors that sell cigarettes. The people buying the product don't get it cheaper and are still stuck with the health consequences. A council member suggested that I might be able to get him information. I am sure I can get him information, but keep in mind, it will likely cost more and take longer for me to get it than if he gets it himself. As always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Rachel Caballero. Then we have Adam Rios, Bob Paulson, and then Brian Keeble.
Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock. Good afternoon, elected people and taxpayer-paid employees. There's been a common theme. I'm going to say thanks for the bone, I guess, for not raising our water rates, but then changing the policy to be able to change the rates once a year instead of every two years. So maybe it's one year, we should all be grateful for the one year, no fee. But you raised everything else, stormwater, waste, airport fees. Now we're going to raise the tax rate today, and half of the tax rate is going to debt. This full-time mayor business is costing us a lot of money. So we may need to go back to the charter and have a part-time mayor, because $570 million in four years with minimal population growth makes absolutely no sense. The comment, if you hear public comment, like Eli was saying, week after week after week, it's governing body not doing what you're supposed to be doing for the community. We have homeless people, you got rid of the marshals. Let's, let's hope Chief Markle and his team can pick up the slack on those warrants. You have a community member that was prosecuted for a permit on a driveway. I don't think that anybody sitting here, except for maybe a few people, and I'll call one out, you know, and call this extreme mayor, Wainharto. I'm being extreme, and I'm going to continue to be extreme, and I implore all city council members to be extreme, because we need to get down to the bottom of where all of our money is going. We have, we have the right to ask questions, to you, and to him, and to every single person on this dais to find out where our money is going. And that is not extreme, and we don't require a script. We're human beings, we have feelings. We come here, I don't have anything written down today. I'm not, I'm not going to use a script. We need to remember what your job is, we need to remember the Constitution of the United States, and you guys need to start being community representatives, because your tenure will be over next year.
Factual statement. Everything that is in this budget is made public to every person in this room. And if you're not certain about that, I invite you to call, email the city manager, deputy city manager sitting right back there. You got nine people up here who will give you access, but the access exists now. So Ms. Caballero, if you're not sure about something in the budget, you will get the answer. Ask it. But please do not say something that's not factual, because this is the taxpayer dollar. No, 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 what, I'm sorry, public comment is done. What we are doing here as a process with transparency is made public to everyone in this room, everyone. I understand, there's disagreement. I get that, I understand. Marielena, I understand where you're coming from, because I said something was going to happen, it didn't, was out of my control with homeless. I've already sent a message to the city manager saying, where are we? Because that's not right. So I get it. But here's the deal, you knew where that money, right? Those are federal monies, where it's going. Everyone in this room has access to where the tax dollar is going, everyone. And that will continue. Now, decisions that are made, that's a different story, whether you agree or not, or how the vote goes up here. But I want to make it clear, I am correcting the statement that was just made. Every penny and dollar is made accessible to you. You want a copy of it, you'll get it. You want an email that describes exactly what fund goes to pay what, you will get it. That is accessible, it is your money, and as Ms. Saldana said earlier, we are here for the people. If, if you don't believe that, that is your, that's your right. We are here for the people. I know when I say that, I say it with conviction. I am not here because I have nothing better to do. I'm here because I love the people of Corpus Christi, and I know I speak for my colleagues. So with that, we're going to move on to the next speaker, Adam Rios. Bob Paulson is after that, and then Brian Keeble. Brian, you're up here. Thank you.
No. Oh, come on.
Sorry to ruin the vibe with positivity. No, I'm just kidding. Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court. Just a couple of things that I'm going to go over. Just had a little bit of a reunion this past weekend, just about 12 or 13 of really good friends of mine we don't always get to meet because life takes you to different states and countries and things like that.
And as Ms. Aldana said earlier, we are here for the people. If it, if you don't believe that, that is your, that's your right. We are here for the people. I know when I say that, I say it with conviction. I am not here because I have nothing better to do. I'm here because I love the people of Corpus Christi and I know I speak for the, my colleagues. So with that, we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Adam Rios. Bob Paulson is after that and then Brian Keeble. Brian, you're up here. Thank you.
No. Oh, come on.
Sorry to ruin the vibe with positivity. No, I'm just kidding. Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court. Just a couple of things that I'm gonna go over. Just had a little bit of a reunion this past weekend. Just about 12 or 13 of really good friends of mine, we don't always get to meet because life takes you to different states and countries and things like that. But we've all, we share about a 40-year friendship. And I was explaining to my wife that the beauty of it was none of us went to the same school. And she was amazed by that. And I said, no, we actually all went to different schools. We became friends by doing skate jams in backyards and surfing and alternative sports and things of that nature. And just to be around that again and to be able to share that again is why I do what I do. I talked last week about the Texas Gulf Surfing Association and what their mission is. And I just want to reread what it is. It's to promote the sport and spirit of surfing on the Texas coast through healthy competition with an emphasis on good sportsmanship, education, and environmental awareness. The TGSA, as I've mentioned before, has the longest-running tenure of any amateur surfing organization. It is a family-oriented organization that specializes in grassroots surfing events that are healthy and fun while again placing emphasis on maintaining academic excellence. I have taken a position with the board on the TGSA, another board, but it's something that I'm passionate about. We've got an open coming this weekend celebrating John Olvy, who is a local surfer who unfortunately passed away fairly recently. And we're doing it in his honor. I am once again coming to the city council to ask if there is a way that we can maybe get a proclamation for the TGSA to recognize their valuable service, especially because it was founded here in Corpus Christi. Outside of that, not to get negative, but I just wanted to say, one of the conversations I had with one of my friends was I lost my mother about 14 years ago to leukemia. And it started out as a blood disorder and led to other things. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because it was mentioned earlier about Flint Hills wanting some money back or rebate or whatever the case may be. About 20 years ago, Corpus was ground zero for women with cancer. It had the highest per capita rate in the country for women with cancer, specifically women who came out of certain neighborhoods in this city. I hadn't thought about that in a long time and as I started to, you start to do a little bit of research. Well, Flint Hills, this is years ago this study was done, and I don't know what they've done to correct it, but they were reporting 79% above what is the standard level for benzene. Benzene is a highly flammable gas, has a very sweet odor. It's been classified as a known human carcinogen by the Environmental Protection Agency. It affects women the most. And if you live near that area, if you did the research on cancer amongst women, you might find some pretty valuable evidence. Anyway, it's linked to reproductive systems, linked to cancer, blood disorders, and unfortunately, leukemia. My mom grew up in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. And you are welcome to contact my office so we can get the proclamation set up. Yes, sir. Bob Paulson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Bob Paulson, 15226 Periteria Drive, Corpus Christi, Texas, Executive Director of the Coastal Bend Industry Association. I'm here today just to ask again for restoration of the $25,000 contribution that the City of Corpus Christi has been making to the Air Quality Partnership, continuing that into the future. Starting as the Air Quality Working Group back in 1995, we've got going on 28-year experience of a regional stakeholder-based, non-regulatory, voluntary emission-reduction-based program that's been very successful for us. The city's been a leader from the very beginning in that. And although the partnership would, will clearly continue, even if this funding isn't restored, it would be a shame for the city to, to not have the, to abandon the leadership role that it took almost three decades ago. So I'd just like to ask you to restore that funding. I think it's very important to the region and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob Paulson. Brian Keeble.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Keeble. I'm the CEO of B3 Acquisitions. My address is 4350 Ocean, 121 Southern. The, I just want to thank you all. I was here until 7:15 or so last meeting. Though every one of you seems to be a policy hawk. You have been so demonstrative on spending our money well. I spend an absorbent amount of time in these chambers watching the, and you know, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Let me go ahead and give the residents a little history lesson of Corpus. Approximately 40 years ago, city leaders, the old timers and the, the city council of old, they ran off SeaWorld San Antonio. That was supposed to be on the island, then it was supposed to be mainland, and they ran it off. I lived on the hill right above SeaWorld San Antonio. I played there. I rode my skateboard in their drainage tanks, in Shamu's tank, everything. That was my first job. I worked my way through the industry. I've been through a lot of different industries and whatnot, but San Antonio was a barren wasteland. Nothing to do there before SeaWorld came. Now, there's Aquatica, there's Fiesta Texas, there's all kinds of shopping, there's all kinds of stuff. But what happened then, and of course, there was, I think it was Bass Pro or Cabela's that was, ran off from here and numerous other things. People wonder why we don't have a Costco. These things have been promulgated the last 40 years. Y'all have been exceptional. You cover every aspect of the political spectrum and y'all get along. Y'all are all, y'all all have respect for each other. Y'all disagree, but y'all are amenable to each other and y'all come to a solution. I appreciate that. Now, there's things that a lot of people don't know of what's happening. Wall Street hates Corpus Christi's guts because of what happened. They don't want to be here. There's a tsunami of money that wants to come here because we have so much to offer, but they are not coming here. Now, the things going on with American Bank Center that that's moving forward and my project, other things that are coming forward, that is there. A lot of things that aren't known is like the project out in the Centon. Does anybody know that that's only phase one? There's five more phases. It is going to be monstrous, but they are waiting to see that, that the current city council is going to, to do the pathway that y'all are currently on and spending the money that needs to be spent to rectify things. There's a reason that our, our roads are 40 years behind because they're 40 years behind. And y'all are taking the steps to, to ratify that. No one will get everything that they want in the budget. It doesn't happen. But thank you for everything that you do. And I'm glad that you're a full-time position. You do an incredible job.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. That concludes our, no, we have Gretchen Arnold, I'm sorry, and two more.
Well, Ms. Arnold, I understand Ms. Arnold is not online. She, she signed up for WebEx Video and my understanding is she's not online.
Yeah, she's here.
There you are, perfect.
So you're gonna wait till the item to speak? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, so next we have Sharon Murphy. Okay, as well. All right, very good.
The item.
So Mayor, that does conclude the public comment period.
Thank you.
Also, Mayor, for the record, Mr. Klepper. I know you, he, he did not appear, so he's not here today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that will take us to Section G, our Board and Committee Appointments. Ms. Watanabe?
Yes, ma'am. The first board for your consideration is the Animal Care Advisory Committee. There's one vacancy. And it represents, it's a preferred but not required category of local animal welfare. So you can appoint someone with that category, but you're not required to.
Okay. We're gonna open up nominations. I'd like to nominate Monica Westburgs.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Shane Gleason.
Montalvo, Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes.
Montalvo, right.
Montalvo, yes. Montalvo, yeah.
So Gleason, Montalvo, okay.
Gleason. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close nominations.
Okay, where would you like to start?
Gleason.
Gleason, Shane Gleason, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Right. And we'll go ahead and start with Councilman Suckley.
Montalvo.
Gleason.
Montalvo.
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 District 5, Montalvo.
Gleason. All right, so Ms. Montalvo is appointed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have the Corpus Christi Type A and Type B boards. Corpus Christi B Corporation and Corpus Christi Business and Job Development Corporation, that's what we normally call them, the Type A and B boards. There are three vacancies on each board and historically, the same people serve on both boards. So Alan Wilson is a member of both boards and he is seeking reappointment. His attendance rate is in your packet.
I move to rea- second.
Okay, so Ms. Hernandes, motion to reappoint seconded by Mr. Barera.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Oh, and Mayor and Council, I forgot to mention Claudia, most, just for the record, Claudia Mostagashi did withdraw her name from consideration this morning.
Okay, thank you.
So we have two vacancies now, Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Eric Evans and Mark LaRue.
Okay. Any other nominations?
And Mark LaRue, you said?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Victoria Holland.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Chad McGill.
Any other nominations?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Michelle Lozano and Becky Garcia.
Okay, we'll close nominations and we will start, we have how many now here? How many vacancies?
Two vacancies, I'm sorry. Mr. Klein, who did you nominate? I couldn't hear. Who did you nominate, Mr. Klein?
Garcia and Lozano.
Lozano, thank you so much.
So we'll start to my right, Ms. Camples. And if you'll choose two, everybody just choose, choose two people.
Garcia? There's, I don't see, I'm sorry. I don't see a Garcia on the list.
No, I don't either.
I'm sorry, that's, that's why I'm just...
Leave it at Lozano, Councilman? Okay, we'll take Garcia, that doesn't exist. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five nominees and we'll start to my right, Ms. Camples.
Go ahead and vote for Eric Evans and Mark LaRue.
And who?
LaRue. Mark LaRue.
Holland and McGill.
Holland and Evans.
Evans and LaRue?
No, wait a minute.
Oh.
You already said it.
No, she, I think she marked the wrong one.
Holland. Holland and Evans.
I thought she marked McGill.
Yes, she did. Good catch. Yeah, I show one vote, LaRue, two Evans, two Holland, and one McGill.
Okay, and then you got mine. Three and two. Okay, Councilman Barera.
I have Evans and LaRue.
LaRue and Evans.
LaRue and Lozano.
LaRue and Evans.
Okay. Great. So LaRue and Evans are appointed.
To both.
To both, and that is to the A and the B boards. Okay, next we have the Ethics Commission. There are three vacancies and per the city code, members are appointed by two-thirds vote of the city council, and that is six affirmative votes, so a little higher than normal. Ed Bennett is seeking reappointment and his attendance rate is in your packet.
Mayor, a motion of reapproval of, renomination of Ed Bennett.
I'm sorry. Okay, see, we hadn't opened nominations yet, but is there?
Yes.
Was there an interest in appointing Mr. Bennett? There was. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Yes, yes. I want to make a motion to reappoint Ed Bennett, please.
I'll second that.
Are we up for, are we voting first or are we?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
So next we have two vacancies.
Okay. We'll open, we'll go ahead and open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Rick Barera.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Modak.
Mayor, point of order. Didn't, didn't we appoint Sulu Modak a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, the issue that we did not meet the threshold, the six-vote threshold when we did that, so we had to bring it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we have the two. Any other nominations?
Two nominations and two slots.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close nominations.
Is there a motion to appoint?
Yeah.
Motion to appoint Rick Barera.
Second.
And Modak.
And Modak, right.
And, and...
Sulu Modak.
Two nominees.
Who?
Sulu Modak.
Modak. Modak. Yeah, there's two nominees and two slots.
I, I just want to make sure your motion includes both of them.
Yes.
I'll second.
Because there are only two.
Yeah, I, I wrote Modak, but I guess it's Modak? Is that?
The last name is M-O-D-A-K. Forgive me if I mispronounce.
Yeah. All right. I nominate both of those.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Okay, so next we have the Parks and Recreation Board.
I nominate Joan Adams.
Okay, any other nominations?
Yeah, I nominate, I'm sorry. Samuel Friar.
Okay, any other nominations? I'll close nominations and we will start to my left.
Friar.
Adams.
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 Friar.
Friar.
Adams.
Okay. Ms. Adams is appointed. Last but not least, we have the Planning Commission and Airport Zoning Commission. There's one vacancy. And per city code, the same individual would serve on both boards, so the same person represents both.
Motion to appoint Michael Budd.
Okay, do we have a second?
Michael Budd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Very good, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, so let's see here. We will now go to Section I, which is our budget-related items. And before we do that, I'd like to make a few comments on the budget process, you know, before we begin this and, and highlight some, some items as well. So this budget process has been the most transparent and arduous that we have had during my service. This budget process has been important for our residents to have a say in the city's financial future. It has been complex and lengthy. We have had unprecedented public input, working to ensure the city is making the best use of our resources. The importance of the budget process for residents cannot be overstated. It has allowed the taxpayer to see how their tax dollars are being used and to hold their elected officials accountable for our decisions. I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the city manager and our city team for their dutiful work. It has been, it has not been easy, but it has been vital for our residents to have a voice in our city's financial future. I want to also add that this budget process has taken real courage. It is courage that is essential to the future success of our city and the residents of this city. So thank you, councilmembers, for your work in moving forward prosperity, which is showing every single day that we are, or every week that we are here. We are making real progress for the people of Corpus Christi and I commend you for it. And with that, I'd like to highlight some of the things that we've heard in the last And with that, I'd like to highlight some of the things that we've heard in the last, you know, many, many weeks, and of course, they get lost because we move on, every week we move on to a different, you know, subject or different topics of the budget. It's a huge budget, so I'm going to take the time right now to highlight some of this. Between the city of Corpus Christi and CCISD, the property tax rate decrease is going to save homeowners approximately $1,192 this next, this next tax bill that we will see. Since fiscal year 22, we have lowered the property tax rate by almost five cents, 4.6 cents to be exact. We've lowered that tax rate. We understand that valuations rise, but the fact of the matter and the responsibility of this council is the tax rate itself. We have lowered it 4.6 cents since fiscal year 22. Residential monthly utility bills will decrease by over $3 a month on average for the average customer. No water, I'm sorry, no water rate increase for the average residential customer, no wastewater rate increase for the residential customer. Elimination of the, excuse me, elimination of the 10-year-old street user fee effective January of 2024, that would have been renewed in December of this year. We are eliminating that. It has done its job and as mentioned before, it's time to do away with it for the sake of the resident. More property tax relief in fiscal year 25 by increasing the qualified homestead exemption, and I thank Councilman Pusley for his great efforts in pushing this forward, from 10% to 20%, and increasing the disabled or over 65 years of age exemption from $50,000 to Nine new sworn police officer positions, nine new sworn firefighter positions. The proposed budget continues robust funding for streets and includes $123 million for fiscal year 2024. Our new pavement-only approach for residential streets is expected to decrease the backlog and reduce the time to rehabilitate all residential streets from 60 years to 12 years. Increase street sweeping on collector streets from four to six times per year and on arterial streets from eight to 10 times per year. Funding for study of structural condition of over 200 traffic signal support systems and a one-year and one-year of recommended replacement of those systems maintained by Public Works. Funding for Ocean Drive Park pavement resurfacing to include Oleander, Dodridge and Swatner Parks. Continuation of tree planting initiative throughout the city, beginning a schedule for minor channel cleaning and maintenance of over, of once every six years. Public Works maintains approximately 300 miles of minor channels. Animal control staff additions, including six kennel tech positions and four animal control officer positions. Increased security guard service at city libraries will provide security service for all operating, during all operating hours. Replacement of outdated and obsolete exercise equipment at our senior centers for our beloved senior citizens. No-cost swim lessons. Neighborhood fitness program will be provided by health district to increase physical activity, educate and promote healthier choices in vulnerable neighborhoods. So these are some of the things, not all of them, but these are some that I chose to highlight because it's extremely important to remember that this is a positive process, a positive process, and, and as mentioned, I, I give, I give it to my councilmembers and to this dais because it takes courage to do and continue to do some of the things that have been done and will be done, and thank you, city manager and all of the team. If anybody has any comments, Councilman Roy.
Yes, I'd like to say again, first of all, thank you to my fellow councilmembers, the city staff, and I also want to thank Public Comment. You know, it's, it's extremely important that we receive feedback, and I do believe that every councilmember up here welcomes that feedback, and it's extremely important to hear from the people. We've heard from people via email, text, public comment, and all of those things, at least with myself, I've taken into consideration. I want to remind people also that this council made the decision to increase the, the fees for industry when it comes to water, and we really looked hard at trying to make sure that the rates across the board were equitable. And so, and, and we didn't do that in a flippant way, we really went through and studied and asked a lot of staff to make sure that we had clarification and understanding on, and backing up what we were trying to achieve. You know, it's, it's interesting, and I, I want to say this, that, you know, we do hear from people at Public Comment, and I appreciate those that come out to Public Comment, and I know that everybody has places to go, but to stick around and be able to listen to a lot of the other things that take place. Because as the mayor just went through this long list of things that we've accomplished and that we've worked on, we realized that it has been years of issues and things that have taken place in the city that this council had to look at, and the city manager, I want to thank the city manager also for the work in bringing up a lot of those things to our attention, to make sure that we could do the best that we can to keep the city running and moving forward, and I think it's important to understand that we're moving forward. A lot of people compare us to San Antonio, they compare us to Dallas, they compare us to Houston and Fort Worth and Arlington and all of those cities, and they talk, I've heard so many people over the years talk about what these other cities have, and we deserve a lot of the things that those cities have, and we're working hard to make sure that we can achieve it so that we have a quality of life in the future for your children and your children's children and the people that are here now. So again, I want to thank everybody. This wasn't something that we went in lightly with, we had a, a lot of meetings. Not only did we have the meetings that were up here that were scheduled, but then we had meetings afterwards to clarify a lot of the issues and to make sure that we were on track. So again, I want to thank everyone for their participation.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow that up. First off, I want to, and I normally don't do this, but there was a lady here during public forum that said that I made a flippant remark about the marshals being able to apply over to county. That's not a flippant remark at all, the county is desperately in need of police officers for their forces, and so her interpretation of that remark as being flippant was just incorrect. But I want to say, you know, one of the things that, that our city manager and this council for the past, really almost four years, has been dedicated to doing is trying to reverse the decades of neglect that has resulted in the city coming to the situations we've been in with poor streets, with poor drainage, with poor water pipes, with all of that, it's just decades of neglect. And as the mayor said, it takes courage to stand up and, and do the things that we need to do to fix those issues. And so, you won't, you won't meet a, a person in this room that is more physically conservative than I am with respect to spending money. And we've made some tough decisions, we've had to raise our taxes and, and raise our rates and things to try to reverse the decades of neglect, and, and the gentleman mentioned a while ago about the loss of, of things here that have, that could have come to this community. We also lost land rees, which would have made a significant impact on our bayfront, and we have yet to recover from that. And so I think there's a lot of things in this budget that address these issues, and a lot of things in our last budget that addressed these issues, and, but we are going to hold the belt tight where we need to, and it's very important that we look at everything, and I appreciate the remarks. I appreciate the public open forum comments as well. I don't think there's any place for coming up here and attacking people personally. If you have a message to deliver, deliver your message, but attacking this council or its individual members is just inappropriate. So thank you all very much, I appreciate working with every one of you, and Peter, thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work that you've put into this budget. I know y'all have spent countless hours working on this, in fact, spending your Sundays and holidays and everything else down here trying to put this together for us, so thank you very much.
Ms. Camples.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for giving us an opportunity to make some remarks. I, I really do want to thank Peter and, and this council again as well, I appreciate your, your remarks, Councilman Everett Roy. I have to say Everett Roy because I always feel like I'm going to say Roy Everett, so anyway. This is monumental, this is just, again, the first step to trying to equalize, you know, a big, a huge, I mean, we tackled, I know our city manager tackled the streets because that's what we could see, we could see that for decades we were neglecting our streets, and I'm grateful that, that the previous city council has, was able to do that. And now here we come on the next two huge issues, which is the water rates. This is the beginning because we only, you know, tried to equalize the raw water rates, we haven't gone any, we haven't gone further yet, but this is the beginning. And the next thing that we're going to be tackling, which is I think in our agenda, is the unfairness on the taxes. This is another thing that we have been subsidizing, I mean, I hate, you know, this is, this is what we've been doing for decades, and yes, I mean, I, you know, I'll discuss it further when we get to that item, which is I think right next, but we do need to address that, that yes, these corporations do provide jobs, but us for a city, we've also been subsidizing, we've also, we've been discounting them for almost, I mean, for like almost 40% of the taxes, so I, I guess we'll discuss it further in the next agenda item, but I just wanted to say thank you, Peter, thank you so much for, for your team, thank you for working countless hours, I, I can't say how grateful the people are, the people here at this dais, so again, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Camples. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number four.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Real quickly. Do you think we, we might hit our consent agenda items first, I know we have several staff members here maybe waiting on that, and I don't think there's anything very controversial about any of them.
Consent 17 through 25.
You could, yeah, you could see which ones want to get pulled.
Do we have anything?
The staff's probably going to be here anyway because of the budget.
Okay.
Right.
Well, whatever. I do want to apologize to our police chief, Mayor, last meeting, he sat here through the entire meeting, waiting on the last agenda item, and we could have taken that way before we did, and Chief, I want to apologize that we didn't recognize that. You have much more important things to do than listen to 14 hours of...
He usually asks and he didn't ask, he was enjoying it. It's educational, Chief Markle, part of the, he's part of the team. We can certainly do consent agenda items and then we'll come back to what's pulled, but we are going to get through the budget-related items before, yeah.
I have to, I have to recuse for item number 22.
Item 22 and consent, okay, so let's go ahead and do that, we can, Councilman Barera is abstaining, I think, on item 22, and we will go ahead, does anyone have any items to pull between 17 and 25? Okay, there being none, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items, well, 17 through 25, with the exception of 22.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? The motion carries. Can we make sure our lights are turned off, ladies and gentlemen? And item number 22 is an ordinance authorizing the approval of change order number one with Fulton Coast Con General Contractors of Corpus Christi. Now, do we have any questions on that or no, we're just pulling it because you're abstaining, correct? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. So consent agenda is done, and that'll take us to item number four, which is our resolution amending financial budgetary policies adopted by resolution 033103 and providing financial policy direction on preparation of the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budgets.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Eddie Houlihan with the Office of Management and Budget. Item four is a resolution amending the financial policies, there's three items that are proposed to be changed, one is an amendment and two are new sections, so I have a PowerPoint to go over those quickly with you. Item, section 4.5, the enterprise funds, we've discussed this, we wanted to strike the, the 25% fund balance reserve, previously said exclusive of debt service, we wanted to strike that language, and also we wanted to change the, it is the goal of the city council to build and maintain a reserved fund balance, not an unreserved fund balance, so we struck that un, unpart of that. And then at the bottom, just a minor change where we separated the, the word stormwater and capitalized the water portion of that. Then a new section to give council the abilities to review water and wastewater annually and to adjust rates if they so see fit, and then any rate changes would go into effect January 1. And then also a new section for regarding the Texas Ambulance Supplemental Payment Program, otherwise known as TASP. So the section reads that annual payment shall be applied exclusively to the fire department budget for one-time expenditures and/or to cover any budget overruns by the fire department in respective, in that respective fiscal year. So I'll stand by if there are any questions on the financial policies.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Peter, you want to spend a second explaining the water wastewater rate changing from one year to, I mean, from two-year to one year?
Right, sure, Councilman, so this is my fifth budget, and when I first got here, it was, it was explained to me that we do the rates every two years, we look at them one year for a two-year rate adjustment. This budget, Councilman Hernandez questioned that, saying why we, why do we do these every other year, and I really didn't have the answer. Come to find out, it was a former city manager that set it up that way, which is that we would set the rates for a two-year timeframe, and in today's day and age with swingings and, and things like commodity pricing, inflation, you saw what happened during COVID, it probably makes sense for us to look at these rates annually, not to say we're going to increase them annually, but annually, we need to review the rates as part of our business process and present what we think the rate should be to city council as part of the budget process. So that's what this fiscal financial policy does, is it sets it back to an annual review, and again, it's not an annual increase, but it's an annual review with the full council on the rates. So it's, it's being responsible to taxpayers in reviewing what we're doing, and if we need to decrease them, we'll decrease them if we, if they think. So it doesn't mean that we're doing this to automatically increase people's rates. I would agree with that, I think it's a good move to, to be more mindful of the rate payer and the business that changes pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, just a little more clarification on that, we were making estimates on, on increases that are two years from now that didn't quite make sense to me, and it, so it didn't, I, I thought it'd be better for us to look at this more frequently, just to make sure that we're doing, looking at it correctly, instead of making assumptions and increasing rates based on assumptions that are two, are two years out in the future.
Right.
The other thing is, there was a few others that, recommendations for some other policy updates, when would we expect to see those?
In the water or the financial, other?
Financial policies.
Which other ones were those, Councilman?
We discussed them after the, after we met, and sorry, last week I was...
Okay, after the council meeting?
Right.
Yeah, we'll bring those back after we, we need a little more time just to get them written right, and Eddie, you have that list, right Eddie, that we had? We have it, Councilman, but we need to review it, and we'll bring those back next couple of months or so.
Okay, I'll, I'll circle back with you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Councilman Barreda.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you please provide clarification on section four-point-five? So, and Eddie, I mean, or whoever, that a maximum of twenty-five percent of the annual enterprise fund appropriations, exclusive any one-time appropriations, and anything over that shall be designated for specific purposes. So, does that mean that we have a, a fund balance in excess of twenty-five percent, that we spend those funds?
It means that we designate them for a specific purpose, which may, yeah.
So, anything in excess of the twenty-five percent has to be designated for a specific purpose?
Correct.
Okay.
Or it could be, it could be designated or just be, you know, a true fund balance. This, this section here deals with the rainy day fund, you know, the reserve fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there could be fund balance still, or there could be no fund balance. That would be part of it.
So, removing debt service, and what does that do?
Well, we, we.
Go ahead, Eddie.
Well, we were excluding debt service one time because debt service has, there's numerous funds in debt service and water and wastewater have their own debt service funds, which also have a reserve. But that reserve is very, a very small amount, like two percent. So, we came to the conclusion that doesn't, you know, it's not sufficient. So, we wanted to remove, to include debt service when we do the twenty-five percent calculation, not, not exclude it.
Okay, to include debt service.
Yeah. So, if the fund balance is a hundred, if the appropriations are a hundred million and debt service was twenty-five million, we would calculate the twenty-five percent on only seventy-five million. We want to calculate it on the full appropriations of a hundred million, including the debt service.
Okay, okay. That, that makes sense to me. That's contrary to what I've been hearing on some other stuff, but that makes sense to me, unless I don't understand. So.
I think you.
Every one.
Because, you know, I obviously expressed my frustration over with regard with, with the utilities of trying to have the debt service, set us, you know, I guess, when I asked, when I, when indicated that we had forty-six million dollars in fund balance in the wa, in water, and what have you, what, what, Reba, right?
Reba George, yes, sir.
Yeah, Reba came back and indicated that, there she is. I was used to her being in the front. And so, that she had indicated, she gave me a balance of about seven million because she took, but that was because she took out the twenty-five percent. Okay, I've answered my own question. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
This kind of goes, this particular one kind of goes to the question I had about the other policy issues. And you said, and you mentioned it here, having a fund balance beyond the reserve fund required. And this is the one where I said, we mentioned it should go to a capital expenditure, as opposed to having just an unassigned fund balance. That way, you have it in the capital expenditure, so you do as a pay-as-you-go. And any, any additional beyond that should go to that. So, you're, we're not debt spending as much.
Right.
So, that, that's what I meant, that it kind of should have tied to this in some way, since you're taking the, you're basically increasing your reserve fund by including the debt amount that you're paying out as part of your budget.
Right.
But then, if you have any reserve funds, it should go into a capital expenditure fund or capital outlay.
Yeah, that's one of the financial policies we'll bring back, Councilman, to maybe have the council establish an amount each year, even beyond, but.
Well, I mean, if, you know, and it's, the way I looked at it is it, you, for the IDIQ program mainly, but it doesn't have to be, right? If you put it in a capital outlay, if you have an emergency in a capital expenditure, you could use that money that's there for capital expenditure, because it's already assigned to that. So, that's why I said, if you, if you think about this logically, that's what you would end up using your reserve balance or your fund balance for anyway, if you needed to.
Right.
So, I recommend that you consider that. I mean, that we look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number four? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion to approve item number four.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number five is a motion authorizing payment of a refund to Flint Hills Resources for two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and thirty cents for industrial district payments received by the city from tax years 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022, as a result of decreased property values from the property appeals process with the Nuasis County Appraisal District, subject to approval of this fiscal year 2024 operating budget.
Good afternoon, Alma Gassus, Interim Director of Finance. So, this item is a motion of authorizing payment of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and thirty cents for a refund for Flint Hills for tax years 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. These came as a last-minute request, and so that's why we had to add it at the last minute to the agenda. But their values were contested. They went to court. The judge already approved it, and this is as a result. Now, there are two benefits to the industrial district agreement that are monumental. One is that they pay the lower rate for the payment in lieu of taxes, which is sixty-two and a half percent of appraised value. The other is if they have any added improvements, their improvements are not added to the value until they hit the fifth year. So, the first four years, those are not taxed. The fifth year, that added value is taxed. So, the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, this is not the first time that we are refunding them any money. This is the second time. The first time came in 2019. We refunded them four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. And the other thing to note is that they also are contesting their 2023 values. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Councilman Klein?
Hi, Alma. My question is really more, I guess, for Peter. This is related, I, it's still dealing with Flint Hills. Has the city sent to Flint Hills an invoice for expenses during and after the Christmas Eve oil spill in Corpus Christi Bay?
No, we did not, Councilman.
Are there plans to do so? And if so, when?
Uh, no, we did not plan to. There's, the city didn't do any direct cleanup. So, the costs that we would, the costs we incurred, including our emergency response information gathering through the emergency management office with Billy Delgado, myself, our communications department.
Yeah, so off the top of my head, I just put this together, that the invoice would include staff expense for notifying the local press, even though the local press didn't pick it up, and then the public as well. The invoice should also include any staff expense accrued from council discussion of the lack of information coming from Flint Hills, and any staff time devoted to identifying the extent of the oil spill effects on area beaches. I think the staff did spend time out on area beaches identifying the conditions of those beaches for several weeks, months afterward, yet as well.
That would be accurate, yes, sir. Those would probably be some of the expenses we incurred.
So, this is one man's opinion time. I would argue strongly that we should send an invoice to Flint Hills for those expenses. Calculate those, estimate those, and send that invoice to Flint Hills. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, the first thing to his point is to know what was, what was the?
The cost. We can work with Billy.
And I think that's fair.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was just saying, we can work with Billy Delgado, our emergency management coordinator, and calculate those and present them to city council for your consideration.
I think, Councilman, is that what you're requesting? Okay.
Okay, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
I mean, really, any expenses related to the oil spill, as I said, notifying the public or checking the area beaches, or, there's, there was a lot of staff time spent on this.
Yeah.
And I just think that, that since it was a result of actions taken or not taken by Flint Hills, that they should bear a financial responsibility for that.
And, and Councilman, we do that for, you know, I should say, Peter, we do that for, for example, our police and fire going out to, you know, outside city limits. And we just had this conversation not long ago. And we want to know, what does it cost to go out there? And therefore, that has led to other conversations. Ms. Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Klein, for bringing that issue up. I'm, you know, this two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars that Flint Hills is, is, has gone to the courts and, and, you know, challenged their appraisal value. This is what, you know, the public needs to understand about these agreements, is that, you know, we as citizens cannot make these agreements and say, you know, we're going to pay a payment in lieu of, you know, of taxes. And then turn around and then challenge their appraisal as if they were, you know, a person. These, these type of agreements is what offsets the citizens, you know, the whole community. I mean, you can't be two things. You can't be a corporation and a person at the same time. This challenge is just in time. And I, I wasn't asking for it. I, you know, I didn't realize that, that Flint Hills would rather pay their attorneys to fight these cases instead of just paying what, what they should pay the city. And now, we have to go back and look, and go back to our budget and thank God that we're physically responsible, that we will be able to have that kind of money. But you look at other cities around our, our area, I want to say Odom, or, you know, or maybe not Odom, but a community, a city, that they're broke. They're broken. They can't pay it. This is, this is serious. This is something that I, I hope that the citizens pay attention to. And, and thank you for also bringing up the fact that this is not the first time that we've had to do this. I hope my fellow council members will remember this when we're discussing the IDAs. This is, this is the next big thing that we're going to have to tackle. And I don't know what else we can do or say, but thank you for, for bringing that up. And hopefully, Flint Hills and all the other ones are paying attention that, you know, we need to be mindful of what these monies are going to do if we don't have it. I mean, we rely on them. They're good. I mean, we always say they're good community partners, and we do. I mean, they did, they do provide jobs. I, we acknowledge that. But now, we're going on forty years on these agreements. And like we had with the water, we've not addressed these kinds of issues. I know, Alma, you're not, you're looking at me as, you know.
I understand. I agree.
What can I do about it? But it's just, we need to bring it out to the light. And most citizens don't know this. When I was running, I was like, yeah, there's these agreements that we, they've been in place for decades. And we need to equalize that. So, thank you. I'm sorry that we are going to have to pay Flint Hills back. They'd rather take it out from us than, you know, pay what they, what they should pay. So, thank you.
Councilman Pesley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, Peter, aren't these IDAs renegotiated over ten years? Is that right?
Yes.
Well, they've been in place for like forty years, but they're up for renewal. So, as soon as we get done this budget. I mean, it hasn't been forty years since they were renegotiated, has it?
Twenty-fourteen.
No, I think that.
Twenty-fourteen was the last one.
Twenty-fifteen.
Ten years ago. Yes, ten years ago.
Yeah. So, ten years ago. That's what I thought. Okay. Well, I'd like to also mention that our friends at Flint Hills, in tax year 2019, paid the city of Corpus Christi three-point, a little over three-point-two million dollars. In tax year 2020, they paid almost three-point-five million dollars. In tax year 2021, they paid three-point-seven million dollars. And in last year, they paid over five million dollars to the city of Corpus Christi. So, but having said that, Peter, have we approached Flint Hills about maybe holding this money in a reserve account, so that if something comes up with respect to either their tax rate or some other issue that comes up, that they could use this sort of as bankable funds that they could utilize instead of us repaying it to them? Have we even approached that discussion with them?
Uh, no, Councilman. They sent us a letter, you know, saying that they wanted to be reimbursed, or refunded, I guess.
Yeah.
So, they didn't mention anything of that nature.
Well, maybe they just didn't think about it. Maybe we ought to give them an opportunity to think about it.
We could. We have a pretty decent working relationship with them, so.
Yeah.
We can sure call them.
I would think maybe we could look at something like that. But, you know, these industries utilizing state law to sue the appraisal districts was put in place back several years ago. There was a state senator here in Texas who rewrote all of the laws associated with how industries are appraised. And then, when he got all the laws written and passed by the state legislature, he left the legislature and started up a firm that advises industries on how to take advantage of these rules. So, it has, it has impacted all taxing authorities and school districts and counties and cities and everyone. So, if we ever want to have an impact on this, we're going to have to do it at the state level, not here.
One option is to, you know, in the future that we could do is reduce the amount of the payout the following year. So, if they, if they owe it.
If they owe us money next year.
The next year, when we bill them, that is one thing that we could reduce.
This is, this is bankable funds that they could reduce that amount by. Or maybe they might want to put it on their new water bill.
That would be nice.
Okay. Ms. Camples, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I wanted to follow up. I, I don't remember exactly the amount of money that, that Councilman Pesley just quoted us. But I do also have the amount of money that we have foregone in taxes from just Flint Hills alone, thirty-three million dollars in just those, in us giving them tax breaks. And the other option that we could have, just as Councilman Pesley just mentioned, is what would happen if we were to dissolve the IDAs? And that would be another, I know you can't answer that now. But this is the other option that, you know, we, we should look into. These IDAs are made to justify or give, you know, these tax abatements to these large corporations. In return, yes, they were supposed to have so many amounts of jobs, but most of the time, these jobs never materialize. And, you know, now that we're in the, here we are in 2023, and most of the other corporations that are coming into our biz, our, our area are even offering less and less jobs for, so we really do need to look at those IDAs seriously.
Councilman Pesley.
Yeah. So, yeah, we can, we can look at, when you make the statement that the IDAs have not helped City of Corpus Christi, that is just absolutely factually not correct. So, if we didn't have these IDAs, we'd have to be furnishing a whole bunch of things to all of these industries that they don't. And by state law, when you make the comment that the abatements have not been fulfilled, by state law, and the county did it while I was there, if they don't provide the number of jobs that they promised that they give in the abatements, we can go back and reduce the amount of the abatements. So, it's absolutely part of what the abatement law says and the agreements have. So, if you're going to make statements like that, Ms. Camples, please do it with facts.
Vice versa.
Go ahead. Yes.
Mayor.
Ms. Fartan.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes.
I was just going to say, for the council and the community, so the industrial development agreements that we have in place today expire soon. So, this fall, this late summer, fall, a city team will be working with the city council to, to renegotiate the industrial development agreements.
Right.
Or eliminate them altogether. That's a choice the council has. We don't have to keep them going. So, that's something, that's on our work plan. We added money in the current year budget to help with some professional services, to get a real robust team on our side. We began some just baseline work through the summer before we had to spend our time on the budget. But there's a, a big policy issue that this city council will have to address. We're, obviously, we'll provide professional recommendations to the council.
Okay.
But that's coming up later this, late, late summer, fall, and into the winter. We have to, we have to negotiate or not them by, by March of next year.
By March of next year?
By March of 2024, before they expire. Right?
Oh, wow.
Yes. So, that'll be a big policy discussion for the council.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing. Is there any, anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number five? Okay, there being no one, we will close public comment.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item and give, uh, staff an opportunity to visit with Flint Hills and see if there's, uh, uh, another, uh, way that we can repay this, uh, either through, uh, a cash credit or something in the near future instead of making the refund at this point in time.
Okay. Peter, is there any, uh, pressing?
No. Again, councilman, I don't, I don't think, oh, it actually was in your agenda packet, but we did provide a copy of the letter that their, uh, senior tax analyst sent to me on the 14th, saying that we are requesting a total refund of this close to 300,000. But if you table it, that'll give us time to talk to, uh, Mr. Hill to see if he wants to consider some other option. Because this does come out of the cities.
I talked to the local folks. He's, he's an accountant. Yeah, he's doing his job.
So, as, as am I putting it on the agenda.
Point of order, is there a need for a second to the ta, motion to table?
Is there what now?
Is there a need for a second to motion table? I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion to table the item until Peter speaks to Mr. Hill?
We'll call Mr. Hill.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Uh, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Table. Okay. Okay, item number six is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by revising the parking rate for long-term parking at the Corpus Christi International Airport. Does anybody have any questions on that, councilman?
I move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
We have a, a motion in a second. Is there, I'll go ahead and open public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to make, uh, comment on item number six? Okay, there being no one, we'll, we'll close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number seven is an ordinance affirming development services fee schedules, uh, including fee schedules for technical construction codes, evacuation and fill, uh, unified development code, zoning, beachfront construction, doom protection and billboards.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. I will go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number seven? There being no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing updates to the City of Corpus Christi's Texas Municipal Retirement System benefits. Do we have any questions?
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number eight? There being no one, we'll close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number nine, an ordinance amending, excuse me, various sections of the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Solid Waste, by revising applicable rates, fees and charges. Is staff presenting an amendment on this?
Uh, no amendment.
No, okay.
No amendment. This is consistent with last week's, my dear.
Yes, sir. Any questions on this, gentlemen, ladies?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'll go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number nine? There being no one, we will, um, close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 10 is an ordinance amending drainage utility charge of the Corpus Christi Code of Ordinances to levy an amended schedule of storm water drainage charges. Do we have any questions?
I move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I will go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 10? There being none, we will close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Presley.
Thank you, mayor. I'm sorry. Peter, the, the stormwater, uh, calculations and the way we which, the way in which we do this calculation now, um, I, I know the intent originally was to remove the stormwater from your water bill.
Right.
And I, and I fully support that. I thought that was a great idea.
Right.
But I, I want to steal Councilman Barrera's term that he uses all the time. I think we took an arithmetic problem and created a calculus problem. And I just, you know, in talking to residents and community members, they don't understand what we're doing. And so we haven't, somehow or another, we haven't done a good job of explaining this. And I mean, all you got to do is, is look at this and, you know, figure it out from one year to the next and based on your property, based on runoff, based on, uh, you know, this and that. It just seems to me we created a very complicated system that our residents don't understand. I, I've been involved in it for two and a half years now and I still can't explain everything to you. So I just think that it, on a go-forward basis, we need to fix this somehow or another to make it so people can understand what it is we're trying to do and what we're doing with these rates. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Okay. Um, we had a motion, we had a second, correct? Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
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 Can we do a roll call, mayor, just so I can get the votes right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so for passage of ordinance number 10.
Can I make a comment first? Yeah. Uh, you do realize a lot of sustainability funds come out of this increase. I, I just want to make that clear, that the, much of the, the, the street sweeping, the covert, uh, cleaning, uh, Gabe, would you come and elaborate on that?
Assistant Director of Storm Water, Gabriel Nohosa. Uh, so yes, sir. So over the 19,000 curvulence we have, we have the, uh, maintenance that we had, uh, program that we created in this fiscal year. Uh, we have the bay water quality project that we're, uh, the floatable interceptors that we're putting along shoreline, uh, the street sweeping, uh, even the channel maintenance, you know, maintaining our open channels, maintaining our, uh, minor channels. So yes, a, a lot of the, uh, sustainability does come out of the stormwater fund.
Ballpark of how much? I mean, what, we had, we had, we had said that we had about $4 million is what we're using for sustainability, Peter?
That's probably more than even that, councilman. It's the majority of this fund, you could argue, is, it's all about water quality.
And how much is that?
So our operating this year will be, uh, just under 30 million dollars. So that's including that service which funds.
No, and then the increase is going to fund how much? I'm sorry.
Uh, the increase is actually increasing the street, the street sweeping from those metrics from 23 to 24. Um, it's going to fund a new, uh, minor channel maintenance. So the over 300 miles right now of minor channel roadside ditches that aren't being maintained, uh, will be, uh, on a schedule now. Um, and also increasing our street sweeping, uh, metric. So we're, uh, we're adding two more street sweepers to our fleet and also some FTEs, uh, for those street sweeping.
It's about 7 million in additional, right?
Yes, sir.
About 7 million, councilman, a new, new investment.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to clear.
Seven, okay.
Thank you very much. All right. I just want, I wanted to be clear. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
So just for clarity, to do the roll call vote if you're ready, mayor?
No, uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Peter, real quick question, or maybe you can answer this. Is this based, is this rate increase based on a two-year rate or a one-year rate?
It's a one-year rate.
This is a one-year rate? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Klein.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I do appreciate the additional funds are going to go towards street sweeping. Um, um, I think you said you gave the figure just a few minutes ago, 33 million dollars, 30 million dollars, 33 million dollars.
A total operating budget this year is going to be.
Right, right, right. So, um, I've been on a committee for the city for the last 13 years called the Cole and Ropes Park Committee, looking at not just bacteria in the bay, but just trash in the bay. And we're not doing a very good job as of now, as of after 13 years. I went down to Ropes Park this past weekend, uh, Saturday night, Sunday, Sunday night, uh, picked up, uh, four-foot-high leaf bag full of trash in about an hour. Went back there last night and picked up another four-foot-high leaf bag of trash, uh, from around the storm drains there at Ropes Park. I'm going to be out there tonight at 7:15 for another hour or so until dark. I challenge everybody in the room and listening to join me tonight because I've only gotten, I would guess maybe about five to six, maybe six, seven percent of the trash picked up so far there. This is all coming off of the storm that we had, uh, almost, well, two weeks ago now today. Uh, so it's clearly coming from the storm drains. A lot of the trash is not coming from people who are using the bay itself, but rather coming out of the storm drain. It's very obvious, uh, when you have bottle caps and, uh, clippings from weed eaters and that sort of thing, amongst, in amongst all the trash. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you, councilman. Okay, Ms. Varta.
All right, so for passage of ordinance number 10 and its second reading, Councilmember Suckley. Ironi.
Yes.
Okay. Bareda.
Aye.
Campos.
Aye.
Hernandez.
No.
Hunter's absent. Klein.
Aye.
Presley.
It's good stuff.
I'm going to vote to support this, but I want to see some progress on fixing this. Thank you.
Roy.
Aye.
Mayor Wajardah.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance passes.
Thank you. Item number 11 is an ordinance amending Corpus Christi section regarding water rates and regarding wastewater rates effective January, January 1 of 2024.
Councilman Bareda.
Here, I just want to make a comment. I mean, I know where this is going. I mean, I've obviously voiced my frustration over the process. And by the way, thank you to you and Reba for putting that information together for me. I'm, I'm disappointed that we didn't have it much, much sooner, uh, before we're entering, engaging in this endeavor. And I still stand by the fact, you know, I contacted one of my colleagues from one of the Big Eight and they were confused as well. And, uh, they're much more versed than I am. So, um, uh, like I said, I, I think it requires more community input. And based on, based on the methodology that we're calculating, I still believe that if from nine ratepayers, we're going to raise 15 million in revenue, why wouldn't we lower the rates for the residential ratepayer? And I think that's a valid question that needs to be answered. And, and, and the re, and, and it's, uh, and, and, and I think if we could examine that, because right now we're making a decision based on some information that, I, I mean, the study's not complete. And I know, how long, how long do we employ, um, the, the, the consultant firm on the water rates? They're going to be working for us for five more years.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm glad that we're going to look at it in another year because I don't think we're finished. And I know we've got a lot of debt. And, uh, like I said, uh, and then, you know, I was, I was told by, you know, our industry partners that it's closer to 20 million that they're going, we're going to generate. Uh, now, once again, I, that was in passing, you know, I can't substantiate it, so I'm not going to hold them accountable to the same thing, you know, what is it? So I'm, I'm going on the numbers you give me and it's about 15 million. And that, that's what I mean. Uh, based on that, because we can't, we haven't been able to spend over 140 million. We haven't. And I haven't been convinced as to, wow, how we're going to accelerate that. I know we've got an issue with debt and I know we got to take care of it, you know, but that's not, it's not all going to debt service. So I just, I just want to say that that's why I'm voting no, because I, I don't think we've gone through enough. And, you know, if you want to make the, the choice of rate, rate equity, then, then I think that the, the, the public deserves a discount, a big discount. So that's really, that's, that's all I have to say, mayor. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, mayor. And just like last week, I can't explain our rates to anybody, um, whether it's residential, industrial, commercial. And I, I would wonder, I wanted to ask if our rates are the same for industry, industry in San Trisho as they are here. Uh, there's, I, I can't, I don't think that's the case either. So without having some sort of, uh, aspect of understanding of how this is going to, how this is going to work forward, uh, it, it, it's hard. Now, I'm going to vote for this particular rate because you're not, we're not raising it rates on the residents and we're not, uh, for water or wastewater. So, uh, I'm going to vote for this, but I'm, but I'm not comfortable with it. Also, on your use of cash needs basis for your rates, I think has some flaws because it's not taking into consideration future debt, um, obligations and requirements over time and it's not being taken into consideration. Now, that's going to be a discussion again when we get, when we get to the capital improvement plan and, uh, because I, I don't think we have a full grasp and understanding of what kind of debt and what, and the debt service that it's going to cost us and what impacts that's going to have to rates in the future. So I'm, thank, I'd like to thank my fellow councilmember, Bareda, for mentioning debt and how, how significant that is for us in the future and what that impact will be and from my, from my perspective, what that impact is going to be on rates. So, um, I don't know if you want to use that, that same method, the cash needs method for, uh, for next year, uh, and I'm glad we're going to be looking at this on a regular basis, uh, but we need to also to project what we're going to be doing for what our capital expenditures are, uh, as pay-as-you-go, as well as, as debt service. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this is, um, uh, delayed, I've been late in acknowledging this. The storing in me, um, forces me to do this. To set the historical record straight, um, I, I have to give kudos to an organization here in, in Corpus Christi for the greater good, uh, that first brought this issue several years ago about the rate inequities, uh, here in, in Corpus Christi. And I have to give kudos to Councilwoman Campos for bringing this to the council as well. Uh, thank you so much for this. That's why we're here talking about this today now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Klein. Uh, Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, mayor. I want to reiterate the same things I said last week. Um, it's similar to what Councilman Hernandez said, but I look forward to working with staff. Hopefully Peter gives, um, Councilman Hernandez or whoever the latitude to work with staff to develop what those snapshots of our cost of service looks like in each of the different areas going forward, including looking at, um, projected debt into the future and how that affects our rates. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Uh, Councilman Roy.
I, I kind of want to reiterate, uh, what Councilmember Suckley said, but, you know, but the other thing is, and I can't remember which council member I talked to, but, you know, w- we understand this is kind of baby steps because there is a big concern in terms of the debt service, uh, coverage at where we're at. And, you know, as a council, we have the ability to actually look at in the future to see what's an appropriate threshold and take into consideration those that, that are part of helping us understand our rating, um, because, and, and one of the things I wanted to mention earlier is that we, during public comments, somebody talked about the fact that we're, we're going from one year or from two years down to one year. But part of that is to make sure, number one, that we can have a better job understanding our, our debt, making sure that we understand our reserves and then making sure also that we do not do something that's going to impact our credit rating. we do not do something that's gonna impact our credit rating. Because, of course, as you know, that's just gonna cost us more money in the long term. So it's a very important subject. We know that it's not perfect. I do believe, as each council member has said, that we've got some more work to do on this. And I do believe that staff understands that and has a better understanding of what we're looking for. So I think the only way we've got to go forward is but continue to go up. And I want to thank you guys for the hard work, and, and I was asking questions as of last night, trying to make sure that I understood and could clarify some things. And I appreciate you guys hanging in there with us. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Pessley?
Yeah, I think one of the things we, we need to do, Peter, we discussed in our last meeting was, we have a bunch of old water contracts that have been in place forever, and we need to look at those.
Right. We, we plan to bring those back to City Council.
Yeah, I think we need to do that like as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And, you know, and the other thing that I asked for, I think we really need to do and get our hands around, is the fund balances that are carried in each one of our accounts so that we, I want to know what our total fund balance accounts look like on a year-in, year-out basis so that we don't get accused of carrying excess fund balance.
Right, and we do report those quarterly, Councilman, to the full council, and those are on our website.
Yeah.
In our quarterly financial report.
Yeah, well, bring, since you mentioned website, somewhere in this, I wanted to bring up the fact that, and this is not critical, I think our IT department does a fantastic job here at the city, but our website needs to be redone.
It's, it's gonna be redone, Councilman. We're, in this budget, we have a contract for a overhaul of the website.
Yeah.
We just picked the design consultant or the firm that's gonna help us do that.
Yeah.
This is another legacy issue where we actually has done it up in Austin, some company in Austin manages it for us, a legacy contract. So we're eliminating that and redoing the entire thing.
And when we do it, we need to make sure that it's ADA compliant.
Good point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open public hearing on item number 11. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 11? Okay, there being no one, we will close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve item number 11.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Item number 12 is an ordinance amending ordinance 17150 by increasing the exemption for ad valorem taxes for all qualified residents, homesteads from 10% to 20% of assessed value commencing tax year 2024, and increasing the exemption for ad valorem taxes for persons residents who are disabled or 65 years of age or older from $50,000, as approved by the citizens of Corpus Christi on April the 4th, 1987, to $62,500 commencing tax year 2024.
Councilman Pessley, you want to move for approval on this one?
I will. Move for approval. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm gonna do public comment, Erin.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, yes, we'll open public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment on item number 12? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 13 is an ordinance adopting the City of Corpus Christi operating budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, beginning October 1 of 2023, and adopting the fiscal year 2024 through 2028 infrastructure management plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eddie Hulahan with the Office of Management and Budget. I'll go through this rather quickly because most of these items you have seen before. We do need an amendment, some changes that were made at the last meeting to be incorporated. We'll go over that also. So the budget does address the community priorities of streets, public safety. We've also added some parking recommends, including the four north side neighborhood parks, and in Corpus Christi water substantial investment in the water distribution system and also in all six wastewater treatment plants. The budget totals 1.5 billion. And regarding the city residential rates, the property tax rate currently is proposed to be decreased from .62 to .599. No, no water rate increase for the typical residential customer, no, no wastewater increase for the proposed, for the residential customer. Stormwater proposed to be increased by a dollar and 15 cents monthly. No proposed rate increase in gas and solid waste, a dollar 15 per month. And the street remove, the street maintenance fee is scheduled to sunset on December 31st in 2023, and will save the typical residential customer $5.38 per month. Sample utility bill, currently the per month charge is $152.07, and we started out the budget process proposing 158.58, and currently we stand at 148.99 per month, or a decrease of $3.08 monthly, or about 2%. This is a sample tax bill for a typical average homestead of a little over 265,000. So with the city decrease of 2 cents, saving about $49 annually, and CCISD a substantial decrease from 1.21 to 96 cents will save about $1,143 for a total annual savings of $1,192. Now for a, something a little more substantial, an island resident, typical homestead, a little, about 405,955. And so the savings in that scenario for the city would be $75. For the CCISD decrease in their rate would be $1,495 for a total annual savings of 1570. And now a couple of examples of Flower Bluff School District, which is a little bit less in their tax rate is, oh, we didn't do, we didn't have the Flower Bluff, we took that out. I'll just quickly go over it. So the, in, in the Flower Bluff District, about 940 annual savings, since their tax rate is considerably less. And for a homestead at about 405,000, more typical of the island homestead, $1,233 in annual savings.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
You know, I, I think this is just kind of manipulation because we didn't have anything to do with CCISDs.
No.
I mean, we might as well count Del Mar and, Del Mar and the county in here.
Right.
Because, I mean, this is just, it just looks like propaganda. And, you know, it just, I mean, I'm sorry, it just, it just looks like propaganda because we're, we're including this. I mean, our, our difference here is, I mean, for the island, and then once, that's once again, it's assuming that the property values of your, your home did not increase. So, anyway, I, I agree the tax rate, and then if they kept the rate the same, that they'd be all right. But I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Campos?
I'm sorry, are we done with the presentation?
No.
Because I wanted to.
Do you wanna wait?
All right, I'll wait.
Sure. Councilman Suckley, did you have a question now?
No, I was just gonna comment on Councilmember Barrera. I, I was the one that had asked for that at some point, just because, so we could see the impact of the 20% tax relief from the state. But I, I get what you're saying.
And I get, it's, and I was gonna say, it's because it's the larger, is this on? It's the larger one, but I, I see your point, but I don't think that was the intent either. Yeah.
It just, you know, we're open.
Right.
It just seems like, you know, we're up here, obviously during public comment, we're open to those, those statements. And then, like I said, if, if that's the case, then yeah, if we're just trying to paint a picture, then we should include Del Mar and the county. Anyway, thank you.
Let's do it. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hulahan.
We did make some community, some amendments based on public input section, sec, and also at council, listened to the council, so we, the water rate was reduced for residential customers. We did remove the wastewater increase, and we did add a small amount of Bluetown Park amenities. And staff amendments, you've seen most of these, except the, the next to the last item, the additional funding where tree planting was done at the last council meeting, so we added that 50,000.
Mm-hmm.
All these amendments are the same as last week. These, these also are the same items you saw last week. And then the amendments, so we want to, based on the council action today, we would strike that refund, the Flynn Hills refund, based on the action that the council took today. Last week, the water was reduced for, the meter charge was reduced, but that was not incorporated into the budget, so we need to do that this week. And then also, for the first time, we've, a lot of the grants that we have are recurring, so we did include those in section 10 of the budget ordinance, but we want to incorporate those into the dollar amount now so that the departments would still come to council to get approval to apply for the grants. But once they're applied for, the city manager would have the authority to appropriate the money instead of bringing back actually two, two items to council, one to get the authority to apply for the grant and another to appropriate the grant. So we're including a lot of those recurring grant amounts in, in the budget. This is just a summary of the, what's taking place so far. We did have seven council workshops, five public input sections, one in each council district. Last week, we did have a public hearing on the tax rate and the budget. And of course, this week is the second reading of the budget. So I'll stand by for any questions that you might have.
Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eddie, I just want to go back to page nine, just for clarification, the, the last line, so, so we're still committed to removing the 25,000 for air monitoring funding, is that correct?
That is currently, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I just need clarification on that. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
Okay, after all the amendments and everything, how much is gonna be in the reserve balance percentage-wise?
Little over, about 21.5%. Most of it being the, the 9 million that was transferred, that's gonna be transferred to street due to the, yes.
Right, so we have what, what does that 1% equal to? So 1% of what, 30, what's our general budget, general fund? 300?
343.
343, so about 3 million?
Yeah, more or less, because we take out the one times, but probably around that amount.
About 3 million?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so in looking at what's happening with the marshals and that we have some fund, fund balance, and I'm not, and I know it's not, it's not reoccurring, but at least have, you know, we'll say at least 50% of that marshal budget. So I'll make a, a motion to amend this budget to include at least 50% of the marshal budget so we can have a slower drawdown and at least have an understanding of what's going on with her.
Second. Okay, so we have motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this?
Can you explain again? I'm sorry, Eddie. Eddie, can you explain to us what this amendment would do to our, our budget right now? I mean?
I think of the, the total reduction was about 490, so about 245,000 would be six months.
And that, the 245,000 would be to give the marshals just more time?
To allow them six months to?
Six months.
Figure out how, where everything lands.
That's, no, excuse me, we've been working with the marshals for months now. The city has a, the HR director's here, so maybe she can give us an update on the placement of them. But they have, we've been working with them and getting them ready for additional vacancies. We have vacancies in our city, very similar jobs. Two of the marshals have retired. Three of the four remaining have used those services. One has, has not used those services, so.
Okay, that's what I thought. I mean, I.
Right, so I think we're, there's, Yvonne probably, she's looking now, but let's have Yvonne come down, so.
Yeah, so how many are, are left still?
There's four remaining.
Four?
Right, three of which have used the HR reduction in force policies to get placed and probably will be placed. One person has not decided to do that.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Yvonne McCain, Human Resources Director. So yes, we do have two. One is retired effective August 31st. We have one that will retire at the end of September. And then we have two that are currently scheduled for interviews, one that continues to hold until this, the vote is finalized. And then we have one that's just been non-responsive. So that's, that's the current status. But we do have two that are currently going through interview process.
And one of the retirees did include the lead marshal?
Yes.
So that, so the lead marshal who oversaw the group is no longer, will no longer be here, so it's gonna be tough to try to piecemeal an operation together, I think. There's been the Audit Committee Chair, excuse me, the Municipal Court Committee chaired by Councilman Barrera, studying this at great length. We, we have, and the report that was done only confirmed what we had began to look at two years ago when we had the COVID pandemic. So also our seven cities above us, only one other city kinda has a marshal program, all the rest have eliminated that function.
I appreciate, thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Councilman, Councilman Hernandez, is that your light? No. Councilman Pessley?
Yvonne, I'm sorry, I didn't get recognized before. Is it proper for you to say what those two individuals are applying for? Can you release that information or?
One second, sorry. We have one employee that's applying or interviewing for a vehicle impound officer position. I'm sorry, didn't bring the report down. A parking control officer, I believe, and then one program manager.
So that would allow them to use their peace officer license, I guess?
Yeah, Councilman, of the six marshals, all six of them had outside employment where they needed a peace officer license for that, those jobs as well. So either they can get it through a city position or through some of their outside employment. All of them had other jobs. And one person had two jobs on top of the city job. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. It's all ahead. Thank you, Yvonne.
So you have the motion to amend for half? For 50% of it? Okay, let me, is there any comment? We're gonna open public hearing. Any comment on item number 13?
Yeah, we have other, yeah, I wanted to make another amendment.
Well, yeah, we, we need to see a vote on this one and we can move forward. Before the public, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Any opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Okay, Mr. Hulahan?
Okay, we're gonna, we also need to amend, at the, at the first reading, the financial policies were included in the ordinance because of the time restraint. So today, we, we separated it out and put it as a resolution, so we just, we need to also amend to remove the financial policies from the budget ordinance.
All the policies or just the Flynn Hills?
Yes, the financial policies.
Okay.
Because they were, they're now a resolution.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, got it. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? The motion carries. Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Klein?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment to include, re-include the $25,000 for air monitoring funding into this motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Or did you have something?
To amend, to, no, to, to increase for the air quality.
To the 25, right, the air quality.
And we could all, we, I mean, the 25,000 could be potentially added to revenues of interest income. We have room, which we've amended for 98,000. Interest rates are expected to increase a little more for, so we could balance it out by increasing the, the interest revenue by 25,000.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion?
If so desired.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Campos?
I'm gonna make another amendment.
Okay. Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, did you, was there some public comment on the?
No, not on, oh, we're just gonna do it then, yeah. It's just the amendment. Right. Yeah, this is just an amendment to add air mon, air monitoring back into the budget. Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. So we've added, okay, the 25,000 is back in. Okay, Mr. Hulahan?
Okay. We need to, the amendment for the items that were mentioned on the slide here.
I wanted to offer an amendment to adding the $150,000 to the, for the air and cooling centers.
Right, the heating and cooling centers, right, Councilwoman? Yes, ma'am.
Second.
And again, let's go over what exactly that, Ms. Campos, your light's on. Yeah, what, Peter?
Right, so that would have been for about three, three or four different enhancements to the program to include better transportation services. We know our partner, RTA, does provide transportation free from the bus stop, and so this would provide more direct service to and from the home. Additionally, it would include outreach services to make sure the most vulnerable that we know from our senior services programming and other contacts. We want to do welfare checks on them, especially during extreme temperatures. And then a third example would be providing more service for persons that have belongings, homeless persons in particular. We're piloting the ConexBox storage system at the main library, so it could include an enhancement to that type of program across all cooling and heating centers. so it could include an enhancement to that type of program across all cooling and heating centers.
Okay. And this would can, I mean, it's sustainable? I mean, it's 150,000.
It could be a recurring, it could be a one-time, uh, funding for this year, and we could see how it goes. Uh, all types of programs. If we had to add staff, say, or some type of contract, uh, it could be recurring, but, yeah.
Okay, Councilman Pasley, do you have a question?
I just wanna state that, you know, Peter, you told us last meeting that this 150,000 dollars is not gonna impact the things that we're already providing, uh, with respect to the-
That's still true, Councilman, yes, sir, so the, the service, because there was, there was some confusion last week that we would be eliminating the hea- the heating and cooling centers if this wasn't a- approved, the 150. So the heating and cooling centers would still stay intact in the operating hours, and the service is still available, whether or not the 150,000 is added back. The 150,000 would provide a different level of service than what we have today.
Yeah, I, I think the city's doing more than they've ever done, and, uh, it's, uh, it's something, we, we just have to be really careful about, it's 150 here, it's 50,000 there, it's 25,000 there, and the next thing you know, you've spent a million bucks, taxpayer's money. So, anyway, we're, as long as we're maintaining what we're already doing, I think we're good.
Councilman, Councilman Segley?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing as, uh, Councilman Pasley, basically that, I think I recall that Peter said that the program was already being expanded already without the 150,000 dollar additional, so thank you for clarifying that, Peter.
Madam?
Yes, ma'am, Council, Councilwoman?
As far as expanding, I mean, we still have a huge issue with our homeless popu- population. And one of the suggestions that I had sent to Peter, which, uh, expanding the heating and cooling could be as, as, uh, our most vulnerable population does use these, um, uh, facilities, uh, public, uh, is that, you know, when, when, when these individuals go, they, they really are at the bottom. They have no place to bathe, to wash their clothes, and I had made a suggestion that, you know, as part of this expanding, we could offer that. It's, it's something that's doable, I, I, you know, I read up, um, a program that the RTA was, you could get RTA buses and, and, uh, reform the, or get them to install some, you know, some showers. I mean, these are something simple, it's 150,000, again, compared to the bus- budget is, is not that much. The, the point being that, you know, we saw earlier today, you know, some of the pictures, and, and, and I'm sure most of you have seen, you know, as you're coming, driving down Staples, don't you see the people in the buses, I mean, trying to get a little bit of shade from just now the RTA shelters that were just installed? All we're asking, all I'm asking is for the support of this city council to add 150,000, to add an, and to add some dignity to, and additional, I mean, we, we, you have to have funds. I'm just raising that one issue, I mean, one suggestion as far as maybe adding some portable showers or some portable washer and dryers, this is, you know, this is doable. So I hope that, um, the entire city council will consider this, um, I, I don't know what else to say except that, you know, please, think of, of our homeless, think about, you know, this could be your brother or sister. Um, that's what I think about when I think about these kindness, uh, these kinds of issues.
Thank you, Ms. Campsley, Councilman Roy.
Peter, if I, if I remember, last week, the question that I had was, why did we put the 150,000 in there in the first place? And can you remind me again of what your answer was?
Um, let me try to, I'm not sure exactly what it was, Councilman, but it was to increase the level of service is the short answer. So we know we do have the heating and cooling centers, uh, but some of those things I mentioned, we don't have. That includes, and we hear about it from time to time, uh, from here at the podium, from residents, that includes, uh, more direct transportation services, uh, that does include welfare checks. We also look to see, uh, what other cities are doing across the country, given the extreme temperatures that a lot of southern cities, uh, and states endure the summer, and that, and they're doing some of this, some of these things, so that does include welfare checks.
And, and we're working in conjunction with other, it's, it's not like we have the burden on ourselves to be able to take care of the homeless population, we work with other groups, right?
That's correct, there's over 30 homeless providing, provider agencies in our, in our city that we do partner with.
Do we support any of those financially?
Um, not, uh-
Not, not directly?
Yeah, well, we do through our, through our federal entitlement grants, we do.
Yeah, but those are federal, not through the city itself.
Right, through our federal entitlement grants, you know, the CDBG and home, uh, dollars.
Okay, through that?
Yeah, right, our community development block grant and our home dollars, uh, those go to many of those partner agencies.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, I do believe that, you know, the, the people of Corpus Christi are a compassionate community, um, and we do wanna help our homeless. Ms. Campsley, would you be, because I do believe too that some of this, and I know we don't know, right? This is 150,000 dollars, but I believe that that has to be partnered with the organizations that serve, that, that's what they do, right? That, that is what they do, they exist to help our homeless and, and, and others. Um, but that said, Ms. Campsley, would you be, um, would you be amenable to changing the language to saying "up to" the 150,000 dollars? Because we don't know what it's going to be, right now it's 150, but how you see fit? Because again, if you bring someone in, you know, an, an organization that we work with and say, you know, how do we address this? If we bring RTA in and say, "How can you help us?", then do we need the full 150? So what if we said "up to"? 150,000?
I'd be amenable to that.
Peter, what do you think?
Yeah, that would give us, uh, I mean, we would still budget the 150, so we have a balanced budget, but-
Right.
Uh, we, that would give us some time to further, uh, work with some of the partner agencies and see if we can, uh, share some of that cost.
Well, it's just a compromise in terms of working with others, a- a- as far as being a partner as well. Um, Councilman Pasley?
Yeah, I just, Councilman Roy asked a good question, and I just wanted to say that, uh, when you pay your tax bill every year, part of your tax bill as a citizen is, is the hospital district, uh, funds that you pay, and the hospital district contributes, uh, over 2 million dollars to these issues, uh, which was a program that Judge Neal and I implemented, uh, several years ago, uh, to help with this, and we partnered with all of the organizations in Corpus Christi, uh, that have the capacity and the ability to deal with homeless, to deal with people with mental issues. Uh, that's one of the biggest things that you have to deal with, are people who have, uh, uh, mental issues. I was watching a program last night, and the largest mental hospital in the United States is the Los Angeles County Jail, is the largest mental hospital in the United States. So, uh, you do contribute. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
You know, I'm a little perturbed by this whole argument. As somebody who was homeless, this pisses me off, because I, I think this is a false, uh, false flag being used for political purposes. Okay, we cannot, we shouldn't be in the business of taking away services that should be done by, by organizations like the Salvation Army, the, the, the Purple Door, the whoever these people that take the time, because then if we supplant them, they're not coming back. We need to support those organizations, not take over for them. And so, Peter, I caution you directly that this is not your role to do this. You need to support the organizations that do do this, okay? So let's not take the opportunity to take away from what they're doing. And, and, you know, I, like I said, this is just political BS to me. Being from that position and, and experiencing it, you guys have no fucking clue of what it feels like, or what that, you have to go through for that. Use the organizations that are, because they're there and they care. Don't take over for them, because the government doesn't care when you, they need to help you. It's the people that do it every day that care. So let's not take over for them, let's help them. Thank you.
Ms. Campsley.
Thank you for that passionate plea, but I am also on the other side. Um, uh, I have family members that are mentally ill, and I, um, I spoke to Sheriff Hooper, and he admitted that 30% of the people that are in jail, in jail, though, that's tax dollars, so whether you spend it in jail, spend your tax dollars, tax dollars supporting the jail system, or maybe spend, you know, 150, uh, up to 150,000 on trying to help. And, and who's to say that the Salvation Army or whatever other organization can't get or can't, uh, support this is, is ridiculous. I mean, um, we're not, we're not taking over anything, as a matter of fact, um, you know, this is, this would be direct, um, services to the homeless. We actually, um, I don't know how much, you know, we, uh, created that homeless department, what, how many years ago?
My first year here, so about four and a half years ago.
Yeah, and, and as a matter of fact, I still hear from others that are trying to help the homeless that they don't receive as much direct action as we want to, as we should. I mean, we still have a huge population out there. So again, whether your tax dollars, if you wanna use them, you know, uh, uh, Councilman Pasley said that, uh, we have the hospital district, and yes, we do, uh, make a contribution there, and, uh, that, well, the taxpayers as well. Uh, but we also have the, you know, the, the sheriff, the, the county that also houses, houses, okay? 30% of the people that are in jail are mentally ill, homeless, they have nowhere to go. And I'm not saying that the 150,000 is gonna give them something to go, but at least it's gonna offer some help. I mean, we have to start somewhere, and as, uh, my Councilman Pasley said, you know, we start with 150, and now it's, you know, a million, and, I mean, seriously, uh, I, I can't believe that, uh, that argument is being used. But I just have to say that, um, that if it, if they, if we can't agree on this, uh, I, you know, the public can obviously hear this, can obviously, um, decide, uh, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna decide on this vote right now in the dais, but the city, the community is gonna know how we voted, and I, I want this, uh, I want this on record.
Mr. Zenoni.
Yes, ma'am, can I just remind the council and the community watching that the heating and cooling centers are used by persons that have shelter, as well as homeless, but I don't have the exact breakdown, but I would submit that a lot of our clients actually have shelter. It's just that their air conditioning system may not be sufficient to cool the entire house. In the wintertime, they may not have, uh, heating system or the funds to pay the utility bills, so they decide to go to the cooling or heating center just to get out of the heat and the, um, and the, uh, coolness of the, of the winter, um, and come to our facility, uh, because theirs may not have, uh, the adequate heat or cooling. So these were never designed to be homeless shelters, the heating and cooling centers, some of the patrons are homeless. Uh, but I would submit that the majority of our patrons that use the heating and cooling centers have houses. They have adequate shelter, it's just their heating and cooling system may be broken, they may not wanna spend the money or have the money to chill the house or heat the house. Uh, that's the, that, those are the intent of these across the country, uh, just to remind the council that they're not, they're not exclusive homeless shelters, right?
And thank you for that, and, and Councilman Hernandez, we appreciate your thoughts, um, but this is not supplanting. Um, this is enhancing, and, and that's what you just cleared up, and I appreciate that, because I don't know that this is gonna go though towards mental health or any of that. This is, this is not a homeless initiative to address issues that have been brought up. This is to improve our cooling centers that are used by, I've seen the numbers, and they've been sent out to everyone, um, hundreds, in some cases, over a thousand, uh, of people, go ahead.
That's why transportation is important, because they're coming from a home or an apartment.
Right.
Uh, RTA does that free of charge, and a lot of those persons using them, in fact, have housing. It's just, again, the, the heating or the cooling system, or the funds aren't there to, to be adequate. So in the extreme te- temperatures of the day, they'll go to the heating and cooling center and, and, and get out of the extremes.
Thank you, Mr. Zenoni, Councilman Roy.
You know, thank you, because, um, I actually wanted to point and kinda bring us back to that issue, because one thing is, we're talking about 150,000 dollars, there are other, we've, we've established that there's organizations and there's other organizations that, that's their job, they do things better. You know, I, I wanted to remind everyone that also, when we have emergencies, that a lot of the high schools and that have those domes, and I know that out in the northwest, the Kyle Island area, like when we had the freeze and that, that they opened those up, and they also took care of first responders. And I know that earlier, you know, during public comment, it was basically like we, it was, how can I say this, this person was basically saying, "We, the communities, we turned our backs", or the council members turned our backs on these people, but there's just a lot of organizations out there that provide these services, and I think it's, it's not responsible of us, for us to try and reach, uh, because we're not gonna give 150,000, or we are, to start just labeling everything possible under the umbrella of homelessness. Uh, you know, there are people that have money, that their air conditioner goes out, it's 140 degrees or 120 degrees, they're gonna seek, they're gonna seek some type of shelter. It's not because they're homeless, it's not because they're poor, but they had a circumstance, and you, as you know, if you've had that happen, that a lot of times they're saying, "Look, I don't even have a rental unit. We're tapped on rental units, you're gonna have to go to a friend's house, you're gonna have to go somewhere, you're gonna have to seek some other type of, of shelter", and a lot of these people are seniors. So I think we gotta stick to the, the issue and at hand. And I know we have a whole neighborhood services department that gets involved in, in working with the homeless initiative and things of that nature, so I, I do believe that this city, this, this, um, council is in tune with what's going on with homelessness. I don't think, I think what we're looking at, and let's just call it what it is, is that whether we're gonna spend another 150,000 dollars on something that we've already put money in that may or may not enhance that particular service. So I just kinda wanna make sure we channel ourselves and get back to knowing what we're, we're voting for, thank you.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Pasley.
Yeah, Peter, we, I, I agree with Councilman Hernandez, we, we just have to be careful. This is, this is, I understand what you're doing and, and are trying to do, but the city of Corpus Christi is not in the homeless shelter business. There are other organizations that are, that are funded and qualified for doing that, and we have to be really careful about getting into that business, because this year it's 150,000 dollars, next year, you know, well, let's just push that a little further, and the next thing you know, we're hiring six people and a director. So we, this is not the business of the taxpayers of Corpus Christi. And that 30% that, you know, Councilman Campsley is talking about, that's what that 2 million dollars from the hospital district was created for. And we brought in every organization in Nuasis County that worked with people with mental challenges, with pe- with drug addiction, with all of the issues. It'd be just like if we decided tomorrow, well, let's take on all of the drug addiction issues in Corpus Christi. It's not our job, it's not this city's job to do that. Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, we are, where are we?
We have a motion and a second, and it's to, um-
To amend, would, would you like to change that, I'm sorry, Ms. Whattha?
I was gonna read it with amendment, the "up to", yeah, it was to add the expanded, expanded heating and cooling services in a, in an amount up to 150,000.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Whattha. And we have a motion, we have a second, okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposing, no?
No.
Okay, can I do a roll call?
Roll call.
Yeah, just so I can hear it. Okay, so for passage of the motion to amend, Councilmember Suckley?
No.
Barrera?
No.
Campsley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
No.
Hunter is absent, Klein?
Yes.
Pasley? Roy?
No.
Mayor Juarez?
Aye.
Okay, the motion fails.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Hulien.
Okay, do we, we need the, uh, amendment on those items that, if you pull up, uh, 13A in the back.
Which one, the amendment, the amended schedule?
Yeah, from the amended needed for the second reading sheet.
Okay.
I think she's gonna-
So can you show that slide, Eddie, just to make it clear? Or that'll work?
Yeah. So we, from, 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 uh, from this, from this, uh, slide here, we would, we remove the 250 for the Flynn Hills refund and add the 25,000- and add the twenty five thousand for the air monitoring to revenues and expenditures, which would bring the, the revenues amended total to one billion, one fourteen, six thirty-three, five forty-four. And the amended expenditures to a billion, two hundred and ten million, four eighty-nine, seven sixty-five. Again, from this sheet, it would be removing the Flynn Hills refund and expenditures and adding twenty five thousand for air monitoring and expenditures and twenty five thousand to increase the interest on investments a little bit by twenty five thousand.
What's the second part of what you said? Twenty five thousand for air quality, for air monitoring?
Monitoring, increasing expenditures and an increase in revenues of twenty five thousand for interest income on investments.
Okay, is that clear for everybody?
I have a question. Okay, if you, on that page, it says remove air monitoring equipment. Okay, I was under the understanding that this was for our participation in an organization, not for equipment.
That's correct.
Okay, so is the, what you have written incorrect here?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure that's clarified.
What does it say?
It says, on that page, on that page, it says, remove air monitoring equipment. So we're not purchasing equipment, we're participating in an organization and that's what that twenty five thousand dollars is for.
Right, just to be clear, so the budget, we recommended in the budget to take the, the initiative monies for the partnership and use them for equipment. So both, both are right. So we're deleting the equipment, the council through the amendment process is gonna add twenty five thousand for the consortium.
For the consortium, so that's what we're voting on. I just want to make sure it was clear on that.
Yeah, good, thank you for bringing that up, I almost did myself. So it's for the consortium, the Coastal Bend Air Quality Initiative Group.
Okay, and I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we need to, we need clarification. We, we need to hear from you all today because there has been, you know, it's a big question mark. You know, and I know this is difficult because people think, well, if we don't vote for this, we're not gonna have air quality monitoring. I'm not sure, I'm not against it, obviously, but I, we need to clarify. And I think Gretchen and I, we're on the same wavelength here. And so I'd like, I'd like to do that here in just a moment. We have another comment and then, and then we can come up. Mr. Pusley.
So Eddie, you, you mentioned a while ago that for the twenty five thousand dollars, we could cover that through a change in our interest?
Correct.
So we wouldn't necessarily have to expend twenty five thousand dollars, is that correct?
No, we're gonna spend twenty five thousand if it gets approved. It's just, Eddie's just identifying the revenue source to pay for it.
Okay.
Which has come from interest earnings.
We had, we had asked, Peter, for you to, and we got a nice long letter from Steve Vera, but we had asked to look at the, or at least I wanted to see what they're spending all this money on. Because if you look at the list of people who are contributing, it's a substantial amount of money. The Port of Corpus Christi is kicking in, what, ninety thousand dollars this year?
I think that was right, yeah, I think that was right.
I, I want to see what, what the balance sheet looks like. I want to know what we're spending, what our twenty five thousand dollars is gonna go.
That's, they're here, so Gretchen's here, everybody's here that, that can answer some questions.
I know Gretchen very well, she and I have gone back a long way. But, and I'm not against, I want everybody to understand this. I'm not against what they're doing.
Right.
I'm not either.
We want, that's why we recommend, that's why we didn't recommend it in the budget.
If you remember, Gretchen, I served on the committee that Gretchen represented for a number of years.
We didn't see the value for the city in this current year, that's why we didn't recommend it in the budget.
No, and, and so I want to know what it is we're gonna spend our money on and why.
Right, we do too.
And we need to do that, I mean, that's something we need to keep an eye on so that we understand what it is we're spending taxpayers' money on.
Right.
And I don't care if it's fifty dollars or a hundred dollars. You know, it's, it's, it is provided to us. And, and you know, the comment is made, Mr. Campos, this really gets under my skin when people come up here and threaten me and are any member of this dais. I've been standing up for reelection and standing up for the things I've done as an elected official since nineteen eighty-six, so I'm not afraid to do that.
Okay, so is this a good time to hear? Yeah, from whomever's gonna come up?
Good afternoon. You're getting a distribution piece because I, I anticipated visiting with y'all today to provide a little bit of clarification from the things I heard last week. And although I'm from the northeast and I can talk Yankee talk, I don't know that I can cover it all in three minutes. So I'm hoping that this two-page piece that you're getting is gonna help some. And forgive me if I do run over three minutes, I'm gonna do my best to cover what I need to cover.
Thank you, Gretchen.
First of all, I want to say thank you for approving the twenty five thousand dollars for the Coastal Bend Air Quality Partnership. And I'd like to take this opportunity to, first of all, before I go any further, I'd be remiss if I don't first introduce Sharon Bailey Murphy. She's the executive director of the organization, very passionate person, very involved with the group for many, many years. And she'll be coming and speaking up here shortly as well. My name is Gretchen Arnold and I chaired this group prior to it becoming a full-time organization for about twenty years. This group actually started in this room about twenty-five years ago by Mayor Mary Rhodes, Assistant City Manager Bill Hennings, when we knew that we were very close to ringing the bell of no longer complying with air quality standards and we understood the economic impact that that would have on our community. So before I go any further, I'll read to you my little Cliff Notes that I'm gonna try to squeeze into the three minutes. You've got a lot more information before you. What the organization is, is a community-wide coordination of collaborative efforts to understand and actively address our airshed's issues. Presentations are received by the group from trained experts on data from area monitors to ensure that emission sources visited with and emission sources reductions that we recommend are sound and scientifically based. That leads me to what we don't do, we don't monitor. The partnership leaves the cumbersome task of owning, operating, and calibrating sensitive scientific equipment to TCEQ, Academia, and EPA. What we do is get trained analysts to provide that information. We look at the monitors, but we are not in the business of owning and operating monitors. We're in the business of getting the information, pulling together emissions reductions recommendations that make sense for our community through the multiple partners that work with us and getting those emissions reductions employed in the community. That's what we do as a collaborative effort. To get into what your money pays for, we participate in a program called Ozone Advance with the EPA where voluntarily, we report on what our partners report to us and who we work through, the things that we do on an annual basis voluntarily to make sure that we continue to comply with air quality standards. I did a brief review of our reports that we submitted.
They're fine.
Just keep on running. From twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-two. And I'm just gonna rattle through this quickly and this is just, just the high notes. Thirty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine website hits that provided emission reduction recommendations and invitation, and information to the community. One hundred and twenty-two special events and briefings in the community about the air they breathe and how they make a difference. Sixty special emission reduction announcements to over six thousand recipients. Three thousand three hundred and twenty-four community vehicles tested for high emissions. One hundred and ninety-six vehicles repaired to clean standards. Two hundred and five gas caps replaced. That program in itself alone has removed sixty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-three pounds of pollutants from our air. Air quality curricula provided to two thousand four hundred and forty-five elementary students. Upgraded paint booths installed at CCAD and area paint and body shops to reduce emissions. Sixty-six RTA CNG buses, thank you, RTA. A two hundred and ninety-mile bicycle network designed based on state-of-the-art GIS tools, apps, and hotspot layering. Over three hundred green homes built by members of a local home building council. Two million six hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seventeen miles traveled in van share programs, thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine miles provided in bus shuttles. That's just a few things that we, through encouraging our partners and keeping them motivated, keeping them educated, gives to our community as a result of this collaborative organization. Currently, the partnership is leading a community-wide planning exercise and work groups are meeting to identify where they can make a difference in emissions reductions and develop community-wide commitments for a community-wide air quality action plan. We commissioned Dr. Jim Lee to perform a study about three years ago now to define what no longer attaining air quality standards would uniquely cost the communities of Nuasis County and San Patricio County. The results of his study identified an annual cost of five hundred and eighty-six million dollars to one point seven billion dollars annually for a minimum of twenty-three years to these two counties if we fall out of compliance with air quality standards. We took our eye off the ball, we rang the bell. Each year, partnership efforts relieve our airshed of tons of emissions. It works to make sure that we never ring that bell, to make sure that our community does not experience the burden of twenty-three years in costs and lost opportunities.
Gretchen, thank you very much. And as was mentioned earlier, if you could please send us, including the city manager, you know, line item, the budget, basically. So we, we are, we, we know how that all delineates.
We will.
And I guess moving forward, should this move, should this move forward, we're gonna receive briefings, is that what it, the agreement, per the agreement?
So what, what's, what's happened in the past is, and actually, we stole Sharon from the city. So when we made our quarterly reports to the city of Corpus Christi, I was sending those reports to Sharon and they in turn went up to wherever they, they go. I'm not real sure about the internal workings of that. We would continue, I'm sorry, I'm, thank, I'm, there's, I'm fighting a little something that's going around and my mini mouse is coming through. We would continue providing quarterly reports. We have large stakeholder meetings quarterly, and by we, I mean Sharon, the partnership. I'm still having a hard time letting go of all of that. Quarterly partnership large meetings are held. The minutes of those meetings, the list of attendees, things that were discussed in addition to where we are currently standing with our ozone attainment is sent on a quarterly basis to the city. If my recommendation to Sharon would be, and, and we continue to visit, we continue to talk, it's easy to electronically submit that to a city representative on a quarterly basis. Perhaps preferably on a quarterly or twice-a-year basis after our meetings, we make a physical, we're in front-of-your-face presentation on where are we with air quality standards. This is the value of your twenty-five thousand dollars and these are the services and deliverables that we have brought to you over that period of time.
Okay, great, Councilman Pusley, you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Gretchen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good to see you again. And this clarifies for me something that was, was troubling for me because, Peter, when this was first presented, this twenty, it was presented in such a way, and you can see it's in our budget,
Yes.
that we were gonna start buying equipment and getting into the monitoring business. And I said, we're not supposed to be doing that. That's, you know, and y'all didn't, don't even do that. And the TCEQ handles that and the other agencies. So this is great work and I appreciate this and I've always been very supportive of what this committee does. And Peter, I want to challenge the city, you know, the county did this when I was there. We had all of our vehicles, as Gretchen remembers, every single one of them tested to make sure that they were up to snuff on air quality controls. And I would challenge the city to do the same thing on a yearly basis because we've got way more cars running up and down the road than any other political organization in this county. So anyway, but thank you very, this helps clarify what we're doing here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen, we appreciate you being here. Okay, Mr. Hulahan, I think you're...
Did you want to hear from the other public comment, Ms. Murphy?
Oh, okay, sure.
Thank you, thank you. And I see you looking at the clock, so I'm gonna go as fast as I can. It's almost deja vu being here with everybody that I worked with. Yes, for thirteen years, I was the environmental affairs manager for the city of Corpus Christi, representing the city of Corpus Christi on the Corpus Christi Air Quality Group. We are now currently the Coastal Bend Air Quality Partnership. The mayor sat on our inaugural board of the partnership. I handed her this baton, a baton just like this, saying to continue the work that we've done for over almost thirty years. And she has so graciously attended our meetings and been part of our board when she was not able to. She's in her proxy, her chief of staff, Alice Acuna. Now currently serving on our board is council member Jim Klein. We really, really appreciate his input, especially his working on the public policy work group for our Coastal Bend Clean Air Action Plan as well as council member Sylvia Campos. We have done work very, very hard for this community, not only for the city of Corpus Christi, but for the entire Nuasis County and San Pat, which is our urban airshed. And so I'm really, really grateful that you have agreed to continue to fund us. I'm, I am wanting some clarification though, is this going to be twenty-five thousand dollars for the end of the twenty-one through twenty-three agreement that we was, that was signed? Or are we still gonna look at, which I sent in April, which was a continuation, an agreement for twenty-four through twenty-six? I do think that one of the things that we need to look at, especially when you were talking about redundancy and doing things that the community is already doing, everything that you have posted in your air quality specialist, the job that you have, is everything our, that this community, this partnership has been doing for the last thirty years. And you're gonna spend fifty-seven thousand dollars plus bump, plus all the benefits, which probably is gonna be about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, when you get twenty-five thousand dollars a year to me to give you the same information. I am currently giving you information every day on the air quality. I am currently making sure that you get, you get, you do get quarterly reports from this organization. They went to me and to IGR at first, they still go to IGR. The person who was on the board gets the financials on it. If you want it all sent to all of you, I sent all of you email just this past week of all the things that we do, clarifying that we do not do air monitoring. We do know air monitoring, the only air monitoring that's reported on Ozone Action report is the air monitoring is done by regulated facilities, which are regulated by TCEQ and the city of Corpus Christi. You have air permits in your operating permits for water, wastewater, the airport, the solid waste, the marina, the, all of those things, if we go out of attainment, it's gonna touch you too. So if there's a, a thought that industry needs to pay this because it's just them, no, it's not just them. We've done, we've done emissions inventories over and over again and it shows that one-third of the emissions come from regular, everyday people. That's why we're putting together the Coastal Bend Air Action Plan because everybody needs to be a part of this. We certainly, certainly appreciate your commitment to this. The mayor herself gave us a commitment. All of our board members wrote a commitment statement to the Air Quality Partnership for how they would use their power and their influence, in their sphere of influence, to, to support this organization. So I really, really appreciate you coming alongside and saying, "We are going to fund you for the remainder of the agreement that you had for twenty-one to twenty-three," which incidentally was, I believe, was encumbered out of my, my budget in twenty-one. So I'm not understanding why it's impacting twenty-four unless you're saying that you're not going to enter into an agreement with us for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So I did need some clarification on that and I'm hoping that you're not saying that. I'm hoping that you're just as committed as you were, as committed as Mary Road was and as committed as Mr. Hennings was to see that we all need to do this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, thanks for being here. Yep, okay, so we need to provide that clarification in terms of...
The, well, Eddie, do you know the answer? The, if the contract expires in twenty-three, we'll, we'll bring it back to city council for a renewal.
Okay.
It may be good so we can see the terms of the contract as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so where are we?
We were discussing the, the motion, a motion to amend, to amend, one more amendment to the budget where we adopt the schedule of adjustments that was on the screen that Eddie had.
So what was the twenty-five thousand dollar vote we took a while ago?
It was for the Air Quality Consortium, right? Sorry, not monitoring, but the partnership.
Yeah, the Coastal Bend Air Quality Partnership.
Okay.
Yeah, they, we have to look at the terms of the contract. We don't have that in front of us here today, but if a new contract is required, we'll bring that to the city council.
Okay, so, so based on that information, Rebecca, would you please change my vote to a yes vote, please?
Okay. Okay.
On the, adding the money for the consortium.
Oh, okay. So going back to the actual amendment, you voted no. If, so council, he does want to vote aye, in favor of it?
Yes.
So that's the first, the amendment that was previously, he's changing his vote, that's okay.
I didn't get your email, I'm sorry. And I've had that problem since I came here and I just accept it. I get some emails and some I don't, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, we have Peter Collins looking into that, councilman.
Yeah, I know. He, they've worked with me on it several times.
Okay. Ms. Wirtha, where are we?
Okay, so we're back on the motion, the, the schedule of adjustments, right?
Okay.
So those were, and there it is, he has it on the screen. So as Mr. Houlihan explained, under proposed expenditures, that refund to Flint Hill is the council's table, so we're going to...
Okay.
Remove that. We're replacing that with twenty-five thousand for the air quality partnership.
Okay.
To fund that.
Okay.
Okay. And then, under revenues, the proposed amended revenues would include twenty-five thousand from interest and income, in, interest, income, and investments, correct?
Correct.
That's how we would pay for that?
Correct.
To make a balance.
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise, everything else is, is as is on the screen. We have to amend the total, I guess, of total amended expenditures. You said from one, one billion, two-ten, four-eighty-nine-seven-six-five. And then I didn't hear what you said for the revenues.
Revenues, one billion, one hundred and fourteen million, six-thirty-three, five-forty-four.
Okay. So we need a motion for that? Right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll entertain a motion. Okay. We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Okay. Are there any other amendments, ma'am, because then we just passed the budget as amended?
Are there any other amendments, ladies, gentlemen?
No.
Okay.
Peter, we need to look into what she just said about the fifty-seven thousand dollars that we're spending to do the same thing they're doing.
We'll get you an accurate statement, councilman, on that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and entertain. We can entertain a motion. No, we need to do public.
We did pub, some public comment, I don't know if there's anyone else. Most of the people during the twelve noon public comment period spoke on the budget, but I care to ask for it again.
Sure, I'll go ahead and...
As long as they haven't spoken already.
Okay. I'll open public hearing, just in case there's anyone else who would like to make any comment on item number thirteen. Now's the time. Okay? There being no one, we'll close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve item number thirteen.
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number fourteen...
Mayor?
I'm sorry?
It's three o'clock. You're going to have to feed us or I can't stay here anymore.
I know. We've got two more. We can do it. Or can we? Peter, are these going to take, because we do, I did want to get the, the one, the Carlisle one out of the way.
Yeah, we do need to, because if we could...
Okay, you know what? We've got to, okay, item number fourteen is an ordinance adopting the Corpus Christi fiscal year 2023-24 capital budget in the amount of seven hundred and three million, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and one dollars is amended by the schedule of adjustments beginning October one of 2023. We do have a motion. Is there a second?
I was approving the one at twenty-nine, but okay.
Oh, you were? I thought you were doing this. I was going to say, I think there is going to be some, you've got some, okay. We're going to scratch that. Then let me, let's take care of the Carlisle one really quickly, if we don't mind. That's item number twenty-nine. Thank you, Councilman Barretta. That is a resolution authorizing a payment of nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for the annual renewal of excess liability and workers' compensation policy through broker of record, Carlisle Insurance Agency, for upcoming policy year, October one.
I move for approval. Second.
Councilman Hurnan, just is that your light for this?
That was for the previous item, so...
Yeah, we'll get back to that. Any further, Mr. Zanoni?
Yeah, just want to thank Chase, Chase Carlisle for being here.
Where's Chase?
Good partner in our insurance.
There you are.
Yes.
No, that's okay, Chase, that's right.
And thank his dad as well, Tom Carlisle, for their service to the city over the many years they've helped us out.
We do. And this is a payment annual renewal.
... on the hillside as well, I want to mention that.
So, Eddie, this is just a typical renewal for excess liability?
Correct.
Did it go up? Do we know?
The premium went down by two percent.
It went down. Thank you, Chase.
Well, but the, the, the maximum coverage for the excess liability went down.
Went down.
For, for law enforcement went from seven million to five million.
Okay. Is that for affordability, or? I'm sure. All right. And I understand that. Great. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Public comment, I didn't know if you wanted any.
Oh, am I going to open? Yes, yes, ma'am. I will ask for, okay, is, would anyone in the audience like to comment on item number twenty-nine? Okay, there being no one, we will close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you. So we're going to break for lunch, then we'll be back for items number fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, to complete our budgetary items. And then after that, we only have, let's see, a few, maybe three items left after that in public hearings, so we will return.
Okay, we will reconvene our meeting and pick up where we left off, which is item number fourteen. So, excuse me, item number fourteen, are we ready, Peter? Should we wait? Okay, thank you. Okay. Eddie, you ready?
Fast forty minutes, huh?
Was I under forty?
I said that was the, what's that?
Was I under forty?
Yeah.
I thought it was over. I'm sorry.
Of course you're under forty.
Of course I'm under forty. Do I look under forty?
You definitely look under forty.
Okay. Yeah. Fourteen. Okay, Mayor, on? Okay, thanks. Okay, Mayor, we're on. Okay. Okay. All right. So if we are reconvening our meeting and picking up on item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is an ordinance adopting the Corpus Christi fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget in the amount of seven hundred and three thousand, uh, seven hundred and three million, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, as amended by the schedule of adjustments beginning October one of two thousand, twenty-three. Mr. Hulian?
All right, Ed Hulian with the Office of Management and Budget. Item fourteen is the second reading of the capital budget. And I won't go over these slides again. Just the amendment slide, uh, the same dollar amendment of the one hundred and eleven thousand for Nowsky Park. And we did make the three changes to the project pages that Councilmember Hernandez requested. And so I'll stand by for any questions.
Councilman Hernandez.
Did, in the last, in last week, we discussed having a study on the future impact of, of the debt associated with the capital improvement plan, having some sort of review of that so we can see what that looks like over the long term. Do we have that?
No, not today, Councilman.
So when do you expect to have that?
Are you, are you referring to the utility, the water wastewater utility or?
Mainly the utilities because the majority of this, of the capital improvement plan is, I would say, four hundred and sixty-some thousand is, uh, is, is the, four hundred million, excuse me, four hundred million, uh, is the utility projects. And we discussed the, the, the debt service associated with that with regards to rates. But I mean, you know, you have this one program for this year and then you have another six hundred and ninety million for next year programmed in. So what's, you know, if we don't have a, a real understanding of what the long-term impacts of that debt is, I mean, I'm not sure we can move forward and under, you know, and approve something because we're approving debt for the future that we don't know what the impact is.
Yeah, we, no, we sent an impact, uh, we had, we sent that, um, what the rate impact would be for the three years of the CIP, not the ten years, but the three year.
And we're talking about water, right? And then wastewater.
We sent it for water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater.
Right, water and wastewater, but not, I mean, not everything else, right?
Right, so the only other utility would be stormwater and, uh, we did not do that one yet.
Okay, so, looking at the, at the impact going forward, shouldn't we have that information before we approve this?
Well, you do have it for the, as you mentioned, the two biggest utilities, the water wastewater, which is three, about three hundred and fifty.
Okay, but you can't look at things in isolation. You gotta look at it as the, the whole picture, right? In terms of what we're gonna be obligating, uh, because you don't, you know, when you get the bill, when you get your, uh, utility bill, you're not just looking at water. You're not just looking at wastewater. You're looking at the whole bill, right?
Well, yeah, but the water wastewater utility pays for that.
Majority of it, right?
What's that?
It's the majority of it, but you also have solid waste, which is actually part of the general fund, which is not counted part of that.
Yeah.
And then you also have stormwater. You have gas in there, what, six hundred, sixty, sixty million for, for, for gas?
Uh, the gas CIP is twenty million for the first year.
Twenty million, yeah, the large project.
But as you know, Councilman, those are all separate funds, so.
Okay. So my next question is, is that if we don't necessarily approve the capital improvement plan today, does it impact anything to do with the, uh, tax rate or anything associated with anything other than just our own internal capital improvement plan?
Uh, what's the answer, Constance? It doesn't impact it, no.
No, it doesn't.
It has, there's no, there's no state requirement on the tax, this, the debt, we have debt to pay and that's, that's what the tax rate equals.
Right, and that has to do with the operating budget, debt service. But since this is future, it doesn't impact that. So we don't necessarily have to approve this specifically today.
If you wanna stop all the capital projects, we would, that was, that's what would happen because we wouldn't have the.
Okay, now that's just nonsense. We have an existing capital improvement plan and we don't actually have to have, by our own, uh, um, charter, we have to have it approved by the end of this month, not.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not like, when I say not today, I meant, you, right, I don't mean like indefinitely.
Oh, that's what I thought you meant, sorry.
No. No. That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, so that, I, I just wanna make that clear that we have to have better understanding of what this debt does to us all in taxes and as well as what it does to rates. Not just for the short term, but for the long term. I mean, cause this, these, this debt here that we're approving, you don't start making payments until three years later. Right?
Yeah, more or less, it could be, yeah, more or less two to three years, depending, right, when we issue it.
So, I mean, we, I mean, it's not even factored in, into the debt for the next three years?
Uh, on the general side, the general obligation bonds it is. We have a ten-year, uh, plan, you know, a ten-year debt plan.
I said rates, right?
Excuse me?
I said rates.
Okay, sorry. So on the water wastewater rates, we showed that to the council, we sent, uh, a part of our correspondences of follow-up.
For the next three years, right?
For the next three years, the rate impact is shown. I don't, uh, yeah, Murphy probably has that with him, we can get it. Uh, but that was analyzed and it was sent, uh, to the council, part of our work.
Okay, so that, that, that debt service is from money that we've already, I mean, that, from plan we already had. It doesn't include what's, what's we're approving today?
No, sir, it included the three-year capital program that is in front of you today, so twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. That's what that model, we modeled it after the three-year CIP plan.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that this particular money that we're approving for now, you don't start paying for three years.
Two or three years, that's correct.
So you're not even taking into consideration what that debt service is for the next couple of years because it, you won't actually start paying back on it for, you know, at least for three years.
Well, we, we did some general modeling, we didn't, you're right, it wasn't in that follow-up memo, but, um, but they're all, but the three-year plan, even the, even the current year plan are all multi-year. You know, that not one project's ever done in one year unless it's a smaller. So on the water one alone, the significant, you know, the multi-years. That's why I'm saying, so if we don't, if we're getting, if the council says, you know, delay the CIP plan, we would probably have to halt projects until we're ready that.
You're not gonna be holding any projects in three weeks.
Okay, but, but Councilman, let's get to.
I mean, that's just a false argument.
I know, but let's get, but let's get to the point, cause I, I agree, you're saying what? Delay this so that we can get what?
So we can get the full view of what the, the debt that we're approving today and.
The effect of that.
The effect of that going forward into, you know, have a projection as to how that's gonna affect debt, uh, service, uh, for the foreseeable future or at least for the last five to ten years. Because, because we're not seeing it. And even in the rate models, it, it's a, it's a cash needs basis for this particular year. It has no consideration for, for, uh, for debt going in the future.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking is that if, we need to have a very clear picture on what kind of impact this debt will have on us for the long term. Because, I mean, and I know, Peter, you say you wanna be here for fifteen years, but you could leave next year and leave us holding the debt back. Right? I, I'm just, I'm giving an example.
That's a bad argument to, you know, yeah.
We're all, you're making bad arguments too, so, right?
It's not a fair argument.
Okay, so, so, Councilman.
So what I'm asking here is that until we get that long-term debt service, we should table this at least until the end of the month. Or postpone it till the end of the month when by our charter is required.
Let, let, let Peter respond to that because I'm gonna hear yours.
Yeah, we won't have any more, we're not gonna have any more information by the end of the month than what we have today.
Okay.
We just won't. It's gonna probably be the late fall, December maybe, that level of detail that the Councilman wants. We have to figure out the rate model availability, uh, we have to get our financial advisors here, um, so.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a long-term effort and that's why we explained that our systems in the city, uh, we're building them from, again, decades of not having them. We should have that, we should be able to hit a button and say, hey, here it is, Councilman, but we don't have it. We don't have the staff, we don't have the modeling. We should, this, we've been around for a hundred years in this water business. So we can get you something by later this fall, early winter. Cause we just don't have the capacity. Reba is a one-person show, I don't know where she's at.
No, that's, that's rates, right? This is, this is a finance question, this is not a Reba question.
It's a Reba question because she's, she's in the, the finance section of the water utility.
Okay. Let, let me get a couple of other comments here. Uh, Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing I mentioned earlier about the information we have, Peter, and, and you're right, you guys did give us the debt service modeling that kind of projected out what it would look like the next few years. But again, the next step that I think that Councilman Hernandez and I want is the impact on the rates.
Right.
Of what that debt service, once it's funded, affects, how it affects our rates.
Yeah, we understand. It's just time, we need time to do it and, uh, some resources.
Okay.
You know, staff or consultant resources.
Right. Councilman, uh, Pusley.
So, is that a moving target number though? I mean, you, we, we realize it is one number today.
Right.
In three or four years, what is that number gonna look like?
That's what, uh, we have.
And that's what your financial advisor's gonna have to come in and, and give you some information on. Okay.
We have a ten-year capital program, this, the spike or the peak is in twenty twenty-five, I believe, with the, that, cause that does include a two-hundred-million-dollar D, seawater desalinization plant.
Right.
So if you took that out, the, the capital investment annually is pretty level, uh, at about a hundred million annually. So generally, we have a good sense of what the rates would be, there's not gonna be extreme rate shock.
And we're not doing a bond, we're not doing any bonds this year.
Right, the next bond program would be twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
But it's a separate, you know, payment system.
Payment, yeah.
But we understand what, I understand, I think the bankers and others up here in the council understand it. It's unfortunate we're not to that point yet, we're getting there. We really should have had it four years ago, uh, but, so we have to, now we, now we have a new rate model for the rates, which is all connected. Uh, we have new financial advisors, uh, we have a, a capital improvement program, now we have to put everything together.
Okay. And you, and you're, you have a fairly high confidence level in our, the, the consulting firm we've hired for our rate modeling?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez, is your light back on?
Yes, I thought there was other question, no?
Not just two.
Okay. Well, until we have some actual understanding of this, it's very hard to approve seven hundred and, and three million dollars of unfettered, you know, debt without having an understanding of what that impact is. And I understand not all of that seven hundred and three is all, is all that, we still have, you know, what, ninety-five percent of it is, is actually, uh, debt. is all that. We still have, you know, what, 95% of it is, is actually, uh, debt, uh, paid for through debt. But. Well, bonds, whatever it is, revenue bonds, general obligation bonds, certificates of obligation, tax notes, whatever it is, it's, it's all debt that we have to pay for. Our tax rate that we're gonna vote on includes an increase because of that, uh, and I say not the tax rate increase, but an overall tax increase because of, of the additional debt that we incurred. Okay?
Right.
So, uh, like I said, I can't, in all good consciousness, vote for something that I have no clues to what it's gonna impact us in the future. And, and, you know, even though I won't be here, you know, five years from now, or whatever timeframe, uh, I mean, I still have, we, I still live here. I still pay rates. I still pay taxes. So it's, it's important that we look at this from the long-term perspective, not just what we need here and now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is your light on, Mr. Pusley? Is that an old light? Okay. That's okay. Um, okay, so Peter, in regards to those comments, um.
Yeah, so we, again, we need time to do that type of analysis. We don't, there's no models in our systems. We don't have the staff adequate right now to do that. So we have to, uh, we have to, and we gotta get our rate consultant back with us. He was out for a couple of, uh, days there, but, so it's doable. We don't have it today, admittedly. Um, so that's the best I can say at this point.
And changes could be made.
We did look at, we looked at the rates from the current CIP. Well, as the Councilman said, it takes, uh, a year of the CIP isn't the same year we're gonna issue that debt, use it as a lag because of construction timeframe and when the bills are due. Uh, but if we take out the seawater desalinization plant, our, our financial debt is pretty level compared to what we have today. It spikes because of the $200 million, uh, that we have programmed in seawater desalinization. So, uh, it's a choice of, uh, we, um, we scaled back some of the projects, we push them out to the future. We can do that analysis. The vote today won't impact, um, any debt payment today, 'cause the debt payments we're making are from debt issues some time ago. So by the time we get here this fall, if the council says, you know what, we can't afford the CIP, then you would amend it at that point.
We can amend, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Right, but we need some direction from council, an approved plan, otherwise we would stop doing some projects if, if there's not clear consensus, 'cause there's a lot of pre-work that goes into it. There's hiring design consultants, there's programmatic scheduling and so on.
Yeah. Okay, so we can approve it, come back with the requested information, and/or even amend it?
We can amend the budget anytime in the year.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Roy.
So ear- earlier today, I, I kind of, I talked about this, and maybe I wasn't as clear, but I, I was saying that, you know what, we've made some headway, but we're not quite there yet. And part of what that there is, is, is what Councilmember Suckley and Hernandez are looking at. They wanna be able to see that picture. But you're right, we have to operate. And, um, I think it's up to this council to make sure that we continue to put the, I don't wanna use the word pressure, but we put the pressure on, in making sure that we get that information sooner than later, because it is viable, but there's a lot that can change, because it is really, it is, in, in, in my opinion, it is a moving number. Because there, there could be a lot that, right now, in terms of D-SAL, that we don't know.
Right.
In, in terms of the participants.
Right.
And how much money that we're going to get, uh, with that project. So all of it's, it's fluid, and we have to think of it like that, that right now it's fluid, but at the same time, we have to do the best that we can in terms of calculating what we think the future is going to be. But none of us here really, I mean, we can do the best that we can in terms of prediction, but there could be some significant things that change.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so, that's the part that I, I, I think that we're on the right track. And I, and. I do think that as long as this council, and we will be here for the next year and so many months, we keep that in mind, that we continue to look for that number and continue to work on that number. If not, then we're just gonna fall back and be the same city that we've always been in the past. So.
We did prioritize that for the council, at the request of the council, the prioritization for the capital projects and the water wastewater. And, um, I mean, it's in the eye of the beholder, but we, we, we think that all these are critical to a, a, a system that has been neglected, just to keep it up and running. I mean, at Owen Stevens Water, we talked today with the Evangeline, uh, consultant that we have. We can't even, even if we got that water today, we couldn't produce it. We couldn't clean it at the plant and polish it, 'cause it's, it's at its maximum capacity, the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. It was a massive investment that's long overdue. It, it will be able to increase production in about two years, but today we're at, we're capped out. So we can be like that, or we can try to get better.
Right.
The capital improvement plan is a little of both, it's fixing decades neglect and trying to take us up a notch or two in terms of being able to grow as a city.
Right. Okay. Uh, thank you, Peter. Councilman Pusley.
And I guess, the, the way I look at it, your capital improvement plan is a roadmap, and the roadmap could change, and, and we can come back and, and modify that or, uh, alter it at any time we need to, 'cause we, as Councilman Roy said, we don't know exactly what all is gonna come down the road with respect to D-SAL or any of that other stuff. So this is a roadmap, and, and the reason I asked the question a while ago about, well, is this a finite number? I don't think it is. It's gonna change. It's a moving target.
Right.
So, uh, the financial analysis, but, you know, we'll just, we'll have to amend this as we need to.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what, yeah, we can do. Uh, Councilman Hernandez, is that your light?
Okay, I just wanna be clear. We are authorizing the city staff to borrow up to 702 million, well, or the amount that is identified in this, in the system. It's.
Yeah, Mr. Oh, go ahead.
It's authorized, we're authorizing you to do these projects. It may not be this amount. Ever since, uh, ever since I've been here, the, the projects have always seemed to have gone over, over budget.
Um, yeah, okay, can I just say?
I mean, we're authorizing you to spend this money.
Mr. Zanoni.
Well, not, um, not necessarily. You're setting up a budget. You're appropriating funds in order to be able to do the projects. We still have to come to council on every step of the way.
Right.
A design contract, construction contract. We're not authorized to spend anything until the contract's approved by the council.
Well, no, no, Peter.
Yeah.
You are authorized to, to assign Jeff to go and, and find, uh, the design, the engineering companies, do a lot of staff work to, to lay the groundwork before you even come to council.
That's true.
Right? There's a lot of time and effort spent, uh, to do these projects before it even gets to us to approve them. Okay, so.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what I, you know, it's not just what we're approving here and the authorization process. It's the whole thing associated. It's all tied together, right? So you're, we're committing to these things, and so what are we gonna do? You know, Jeff and his team are gonna do all this work to bring this up to us, and says, yeah, you know, Peter, that's too much money. We're gonna just waste all that time and effort that they're working on, uh, and not do it. And I know, you've, you've come to us several times like that. Well, you know, it wasn't why we wanted to do it, you know, we only got one bid, and, you know, if we have to go back, then it's gonna cost us more money, blah, 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 blah. Yada, yada, yada. Sorry, I had to throw that in there. Saw it in a commercial the other day.
Yeah.
But anyway.
I'm answering, Councilman, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, is that, you know, we're committing, we're committing, we're authorizing you to do this work.
You're appro, you're, you're authorizing the appropriation of the money.
Right.
Right.
So, so he is.
But not the work.
That's what I'm trying to get across. It's not, you know, we're committing.
No, we, no, we understand. You, you are seeing it that way, and he has said we're allocating the monies. What I would say is we need appropriating, sorry. Um, I would say that we, we have the authority to amend this plan. As Councilman Pusley said, it's a roadmap. It, it's not set in stone, D-SAL. We don't know. I believe that things will absolutely change in terms of some partnerships moving forward. Um, but, but he can't take that out. If he took that out, somebody up here would be saying, well, why would you be assuming that you wouldn't pay, we're not paying, you know, for the D-SAL, you know, 100%? So it's, it's, it's a double-edged sword. But at the end of the day, Gil, we're, we're able to amend. Yes, you can start work. I mean, I, 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 you're right. He, you said it's true. Yes, you can start doing some design work and such, but that doesn't mean, I don't think that we still can't look at this with stronger oversight, as Councilman , uh, Roy just mentioned, and move this forward. You have that strong oversight, and we appreciate that. But I think today, we need to push this forward and then keep that strong oversight and make certain that we're, and, and I'm not, I mean, you can vote no for it. You don't have to agree with me. I'm just, this is my two cents, just like everybody else's. So with that, Councilman Roy, I think you have a comment?
Yeah, the only thing I wanna add to that is that even if we had the information right now, so let's say that you actually had that forecast that we were looking for right now.
Right.
There's still, it's, it's subject to things that are beyond our control. And so it doesn't, so at what point in time, 'cause we can't really tell the future, at what point in time is enough information, enough information? Because the bottom line is, is that things happen in life that we don't contemplate. Costs change, things change, and we have to be, it has to be a fluid document, and it's something that we have to have oversight on, and that's what was lacking before. And that's why we're sitting there with an American Bank building, American Bank Center that has a maintenance issue right now, and, and all these other issues, because somebody kicked the can down the road. So that's the only thing. Even if we had the information now, what would you do differently?
Ask me the question?
No, he's just hypothetically. He's just hypothetically speaking. Yeah.
Like I said, there's nowhere, by saying, don't do work, don't, just stop everything. I've never said that. I said prioritize and live within our means, but we don't, we, we need to understand what those means are, right? It's not just a blank check. So that, I, I, I wanna make sure we, what I'm trying to get across here is that it's not, hey, let's just not do this work. That's, that's complete nonsense. It's about, let's, let's do it within reason and what we can, so we're not, you know, asking our, our citizens for massive rate hikes in order to pay for stuff. I don't even know what's gonna happen with the assessment with Mary Rose. I see that you have like 12, a little over 12 million here assessed, um, assigned to it this year. What if that has to be redone and replaced? That would be an amendment upward, right? So, I mean, there's a lot that we don't know, that's true to Councilman Roy's point, but, I mean, we're stacking a lot of stuff in here that I don't know we can, we can pay for within the rates that we have without having significant increases. So, uh, that's my, my issue. I wanna know what this is gonna do to, to rates that we're obligating ourselves to do. So, thank you.
Can we, can we get that information?
Right, yeah, this budget, this is a budget, so it doesn't obligate the rate payer to anything, but we will have that, as I mentioned, later this fall.
Okay.
We can't do anything in three weeks.
Then please don't go around saying we have 1.5 billion dollar in budget if it's not money we're actually spending.
It's the budget. That's the roadmap, to use Pusley's term. Yeah, it's a roadmap. The budget's not a, a checkbook. We, you know, it's a roadmap saying this is the goal for the year.
Right.
Or, or multiple years in the case of the CIP.
Councilman Suckley.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Roy as well. There are variables you can't plan for. Um, you know, the numbers are gonna be the numbers, but I think we all need to know roughly what the numbers are gonna be so that we can quantify that. 'Cause if we have council members right now that say, I'm not gonna vote for, uh, another rate increase next year, then you might as well exclude them right away, because we're gonna have a rate increase likely based off of the impact to rates based of, off of all the debt we're adding in the coming years. So, you're right, there are variables, numbers are the numbers, but I think we ought to at least be able to closely quantify the impact to our rates going forward. So we all know very clearly, before we continue to vote for new stuff and new projects, what that's gonna look like next year.
I agree. And you're gonna bring that back to us.
Right.
And if we need or want to amend that plan, we can.
Absolutely.
Right?
Right.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number 14? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve item number 14. Okay, do we have a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Who was that? Okay, Councilman Barreda and Councilman Hernandez. Okay, item number 15 is an ordinance setting a property tax rate of .599774 per $100 valuation, which is effectively an 8.3% increase over the non-new revenue rate, tax rate, and approving the tax rule as calculated.
Hello, Al Macassas, Interim Director of Finance. We are, this is the second reading for the tax rate, and we are proposing the rate of .599774 per $100 valuation.
Okay. Uh, Councilman, do we have any, any questions or comments on item number 15? Okay, I will go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment on item number 15? Okay, there being no one, I will close, uh, public hearing and entertain a motion to approve item number 15. Do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, as per section.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. As per section 26.05B of the tax code, uh, we are required to make a motion, uh, setting the tax rate that exceeds the, what used to be called the effective tax rate is now called the, uh, new, no new revenue rate. So I would move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .599744 per 100 valuation.
774.
Did I say that?
.599774.
.99774.
Yes.
Okay. My dyslexia kicked in?
A little, just a little.
It, it did, I, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And it doesn't, I don't even know it. Sorry. Anyway, uh, I'll back up. The adoption of a tax rate of .599774 per $100 valuation, which is effectively an 8.3% increase in the tax rate.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
We need a roll call vote for this one, Mayor, record vote.
Sounds good.
Sorry, I just wanna.
Okay, yes.
You do need one.
Go ahead.
And of course, this requires six votes as well per passage.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Or 60%. So for passage of ordinance number 15 on its second reading, Councilmember Suckley.
Aye.
Barreda?
No.
Campos?
Aye.
Hernandez?
No.
Hunter is absent. Klein?
Aye.
Pusley?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Mayor Juarez?
Aye.
The ordinance passes.
Thank you. Item number 16, yes, ma'am, is an ordinance ratifying the property tax rate reflected by the fiscal year 2324 operating budget. That will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the fiscal year 2223 operating budget in the amount of 13 million 499,855 dollars.
Okay.
Do we have any questions, Jen? Oh.
No, go ahead. I mean, ratification, this is a ratification of property tax rate, which we are required to do by state law. Any, any budget that raises more revenue than last year's budget requires us to do this.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment on item number 16? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve item number 16 to ratify what we just voted on.
I second that.
We have a second. All in favors, or do you have to take this vote, Ms. Whata?
No, ma'am, it's not required.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, the motion carries.
So, um, Barreda and Hernandez.
And so now we will skip over to section L, public hearings. Item number 26 is a second hearing ordinance approving amendments to the tax increment reinvestment zone number two, amended project and financing plans approved by the Board of Directors of reinvestment zone number two.
Good afternoon, Heather Holber, Assistant City Manager. This item actually was on consent last week, and City Council did approve it. We do have to, anytime we do a change to our project and financing plan, we do need to bring it forward for a public hearing. So this is the public hearing. These changes reflect the changes that were, with the work done by the board back in May to fully, to flesh out the project and financing plan for the extension of TERS number two. And so if there are available for any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 26?
This is a public hearing, so we'll open a public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, well, let me, let me close, I'll go ahead and close public hearing. And Councilman Pesley.
Okay, so Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but the TERS number two, which we fondly refer to as the Padre Island TERS.
Exactly.
One of the main things it was set up for was the maintenance of Packery Channel.
Yes.
And the maintenance of the seawall and the beach area in and around the seawall, is that correct?
So the original purpose of it was for Packery Channel. It did not, at that point in time, include, is my understanding, there was not a project for the maintenance of the seawall. It was just for the debt service and the ongoing.
And I'm talking about the seawall on the island.
Exactly, exactly, yes. And so in this new project and financing plan, there is money. And there is a project for the repairs, there's about $15 million has been identified for repairs, improvements, and ongoing maintenance of that seawall area there near White Cat Beach area.
And we're not carrying, Peter, any monies in our budget for that. It's all going to be paid for through the TERS.
Right now, all through the TERS, yes, sir, Councilman.
All right, that's my only question, thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. Related to that, Councilman Pesley, the first of the owners behind the seawall, which is Island House, are having a board meeting this Saturday, which I've agreed to attend. I'm going to take John Michael along with me to serve as a resource for information, since he's probably the most knowledgeable of that in the relationship with Packery Channel. So there's, Jeff may correct me on this, but it's around 344 different property owners behind that seawall that we're all going to be working with to try and get everyone on board with our plan. So anyways, that'll be the start, starting Saturday.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, correct? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Section M, individual consideration items. Item number 27 is a one-reading ordinance authorizing the designation of industrial districts number nine, 10, and 11 within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Corpus Christi, Texas.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We can have more discussion if we need it. I will ask for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 27? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, I got to ask you this the other day when I were chatting about this. The pilot payment in lieu of taxes rate for the other IDAs is 62.5% with the evaluation. Is that what will be for these areas as well?
So it depends on what the, so these would be subject under the new ones that we're in the process of, or will be negotiating over the next several months. Within our agreements for IDAs, for industrial district agreements, they're somewhat of a favored nation, so all IDAs must be equal. And so these would be entered into the IDA under whatever that platform or that contract is at the time that they would enter in.
And that's going to happen sometime this winter, I take it?
Yes, we're going to, we'll be starting after the budget. But this item here, Councilman, just sets up districts. There's no agreement with this. These are for newer industrial operations that don't have a district. So this assigns them District 9, 10, and 11. This fall, and their, their IDAs, if we had them, wouldn't come into place until 2033. So we'll have to see this fall if we, if these are included in that or if we wait to do an IDA with these three districts later.
And she knows what I'm asking you, so. They're currently in the ETJ. They are, are they making any financial contribution to the city as it stands now?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman, that 62.5% is just on real property. So today, all industrial development agreements, the city receives 0% on personal property. So real property, a fixed building. Today, though, the city gets zero on personal property. That includes equipment, vehicles, oil, that type of thing, yes, sir.
Right.
Ms. Campus.
Thank you, Peter. On the, this is another industrial district agreement that will be on record for 10 years, is that what you said?
So this is not actually the agreements, this is just creating the industrial districts. And then as we move closer to 2033, at that point in time, we will then enter into industrial district agreements with the three companies.
This is just establishing the area?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, I don't think it was very clear in the sense of what it is. There, we have, what, 380 agreements and 212, 212 agreements with a couple of companies that are in these areas that aren't under an IDA but are supposed to be an IDA at the end of those agreements. And that's setting up the district before they come into play, before those agreements expire.
Exactly.
So that's, all that is basically creating the shell that they're going to fall into.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I know that they have to enter into agreements before 2033, yes.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Let's see, where were we? Did we have a?
You had a motion and a second on the floor, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. And our last item of the day is item number 28. And that is an ordinance accepting and appropriating two grant awards in the amount of $1 million.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I still want to hear, because this is a good news item. It always is, particularly because, at least at four and three is where we have.
No, this is a great news item. And we'll read it for the public.
Plus Tom stayed here all day.
But thank you for, I know, you're like, why didn't you tell me in advance? So this is an ordinance accepting and appropriating two grant awards in the amount of $1 million and $175,000 in funding from the Office of the Governor's Texas Military Preparedness Commission Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. Wow. Or D-Ag program, with matching contributions from the city totaling $130,000 for the perimeter fencing project at Naval Air Station Corpus Christi and acquisition of two portable solar-powered electric vehicle charging stations for the Corpus Christi Army Depot, and authorizing the purchase of two portable solar-powered electric vehicle charging stations. This is great news, so cheerlead it, Ryan.
Oh, cheerlead it, all right. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. Ryan Skrabarchuk, Director of Intergovernmental Relations. My first time in front of the council since my introduction, so what a pleasure to be here today on this item. Before we begin, I want to thank Tom Taglebu, who's our D-Ag grant writer, in addition to Gary Bradford, who is the Corpus Christi's Commissioner on Governor Abbott's Texas Military Preparedness Commission. Without these two gentlemen, we wouldn't be successful as we were or have been in securing these competitive grants. There are a lot of departments involved in securing these grants, and we do have a slideshow just to kind of demonstrate what these two projects are. So just a real quick timeline, I won't, I won't walk you all the way through this, but on May 9, 2023, council approved the application for these two projects. These are projects identified by the military installations as priorities for them. In June, we received notice from Governor Abbott's office that we would be receiving the grants for both projects. We were one of three communities in this round to be granted these. Obviously, y'all know the tremendous impact that both installations have in terms of the number of people they employ and the economic contributions. I should state, we want to recognize the work of our local legislative delegation, including Senators Chui Hinojosa, Morgan LaMontea, Representatives Todd Hunter, Abel Harro, and Jay M. Lozano, because of their support of the D-Ag funding. It's something we have to go to Austin every legislative session and advocate for because it's so important. And they were successful in getting an additional $30 million for this next biennium. So the Naval Air Station Corpus Christi project, there was a little bit of an edit from the original slideshow you might have seen. It's not a scalable fence, but it's a scalable project. It's a force protection project to replace over 13,000 feet of perimeter fencing and two manual gates. This is a phase and a multi-phase project for Naval Air Station Corpus Christi. And it's to bring them up to standard for the DOD anti-terrorism and force protection. There's a breakdown of the financials on the project. The federal government matches the D-Ag contribution, and then the state makes our contribution, in this case, on engineering and project management. CCAD identified this project for both a resiliency measure and just an efficiency measure. They have, I believe, over 280 electric utility vehicles out on the base. And so these mobile solar-powered training, or excuse me, charging stations allow them to utilize those vehicles off-grid and in the case of a disaster, be able to be at full operational capacity. Similar breakdown as the other slide. And on this, obviously, it's a much simpler project where we cover our procurement and grant management. We'll obviously want to thank our military partners and our staff liaison counterparts at both installations. And thank you, Mayor and Council.
Great, Ryan, thank you. Tom, thank you. Thanks for everything you've done. This is huge, as you, we all know. It's big, big strides forward, and it speaks volumes for, you know, they believe in us and in our installation. So thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ryan. Yes, so I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. Do, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 28? There being no one, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to approve.
There's a motion and second on the floor, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Yes, so you know what? Yeah, we need to go back and do a roll call.
Just for the record, on item 14, to approve the capital budget, we did not do a roll call vote. So I just wanted to just take that vote again, if we could, just for the record, to do a roll call vote.
On the capital budget?
The capital budget.
Okay.